Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 3:01 on Wednesday, August 23rd. I'd like to call this meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission to order. It is great to see everybody. This is our first meeting since recess. Great to see my colleagues. We're going to have a wonderful meeting tonight, so let's begin. It is my honor and privilege to introduce by recommendation of Commissioner Curtis Richardson. Thank you very much. Pastor Kenneth Frame, who will be providing our invocation tonight through a poem that he wrote himself. I'm also proud to announce that Pastor Frame is a member of the city Tallahassee family through Park and Enforcement. So if you'll please stand for the invocation.
Eternal God, we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to assemble in this holy place. We thank you, God, for everyone here that is present. Bless this meeting, God, and bless everyone here. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pastor?
Good evening, commissioners and city leaders.
I think everybody can sit down.
This is the point. Pastor Frame has written a poem specifically, and thank you for allowing us to... How long is it, Pastor Frame? You have to sit down there. The floor is yours, sir.
All right. All right. I have written a poem to honor our diocese here this evening, and I call it "The Essence of a Blessing." There's a place in the heart where time stands still as the move of hope captures the will, the will to serve with honor and pride, for our Tallahassee commissioners are changing lives, reaching our youth by leading the way, so the spirit of fear won't conquer their day by giving them the skills to achieve their dreams and walk in the footprints of Dr. King, as it catapults the mind into the essence of grace, for City Hall in Tallahassee is that special place, the hub of the engine that runs by faith, so the spirit of love will always flow, so the blessings of life will continue to grow, because they treat all citizens as family and friends with a touch of class, with a pinch of Southern grace, for the Commissioner Chambers is a special place rooted and grounded in the history of time, as it echoes the voices of all mankind. You see, John E. Daley is the mayor of this place, a man of honor with incredible taste, for the dress suits he wears will blow your mind, because this amazing mayor is dressed to the nigh. A man of fashion and a man of faith that's rooted and grounded in this historic place, for he represents seat four with honor and grace, an American mayor that gives his all, so the city of Tallahassee will never fall. As the birds fly across our skies, our city manager Reese Goat is blessing lives by giving his all to lead this place with integrity and honor in his amazing grace, for his classy style would touch your soul, a man of God with a heart of gold, for his Southern accent is one of a kind, the heartbeat of the city, that's who he is. Technically speaking, we're all his kids. So thank you, Mr. Manager, for all you do, but when things happen like they sometime do, our city attorney is on the move, because Cassandra Jackson will explore your mind, an amazing lawyer that's right on time, for her legal skills are truly unmatched, because our city attorney has all our backs. So if you're thinking about suing us, you better think twice, because when she enters the courtroom, she's dynamite. As the breeze blows through the chain of parks, our city treasurer, Mr. Cook, will bless your heart, a man of integrity with incredible skills, well, this is the one that pays our bills. Our city treasurer is truly the best, because he always makes sure we get our paychecks, a man of integrity with an amazing mind, making sure our employees get paid on time. My wife sure appreciates you, Mr. Cook, because when I get paid, she does too. And the funny thing about it, sir, her check is hers, and mine is too. So thank you, Mr. Cook, for all you do, so all of our citizens can enjoy a better life, so the footprints of grace can be that light, to bless the youth to open their eyes, to see the potential that they carry inside, so they can stand on their own with their heads held high in a college one day, learning with pride, for our commissioners believe in blessing lives. You see, being a commissioner is more than just a job, it's the love for the people that carry inside, to birth a nation with incredible grace that's rooted in the foundation of this historic place and the capital city of this beautiful state. As the mockingbird sings its beautiful songs, for Tallahassee commissioners are truly on the move with industry, technology, and so much more, with the footprints of excellence that can't be ignored. You see, City Hall is a special place in the center of town, where voices are heard and decisions are made that shape the foundations of this magnificent place, when the footprints of greatness on these hollow grounds that shape the legacy of this beautiful town, for our Commissioner Chambers is a special place that touches the hearts of every race, where none of our citizens should feel afraid, no matter their religion or their beliefs. When you enter these chambers, you are totally free to be who God made you to be. So walk with pride with your heads held high, because when you enter these chambers, blessings are alive. So I wrote this poem for our commissioners today, just for a few words that I wanted to say to bless your soul in a special way. You see, Commissioner Jaclyn Porter holds seat one, is a woman of integrity and a woman of grace, who was born in Brazil, that beautiful place, that moved to South Florida with a family one day, and attended Florida State to achieve her dreams and graduated with honors with a master's degree, a true community builder who knows our streets, who advocates for neighborhoods to help them get grants, so all of our communities can have an equal chance, as she fights for the youth and fights for the weak, so the voices can be heard from her commissioner's seat by leaving her mark in the history of time, for this leader called Jack is one of a kind. There's another commissioner I think you should know, a man who's always in the mix of a flow, making things happen across this land, for Commissioner Jerry Matlow is a dedicated man that always had a beautiful plan. You see, he was raised on the south side of town, for he's the one that holds seat three, as he strives to make Tallahassee the best it can be, a true family man who's always on the move, for his wife and his children keep him in the groove. There's another commissioner that's rooted by grace, a true woman of God who lives by faith, and was made her mark in the history of time, for Diane M. Cox is one of a kind by helping this city to be a bright star. Mayor Pro Tim, that's who she is, who fights a good fight to support our kids, a woman of grace with integrity and mind. Every time you see her, she has a smile on her face, who works for the people to get the job done, for she knows to put the devil on the run, so the spirit of Tallahassee will come alive, for she is the woman of God that holds seat five, so the spirit of truth will always survive, with the commissioner of honor right by her side, because Commissioner Curtis Richardson is changing lives, a man with a true heart of gold that fights for the citizens so the truth can be told, and his commitment to Tallahassee will bless your soul, as he holds seat two with the best of the best, a commissioner that's definitely truly on the move, by supporting our veterans in a special way, so their courage and honor will never fade away, as their honor flight legacy takes to the sky, to Washington, D.C. with tears in their eyes, a man of greatness that's changed many lives, supporting our seniors and children too, a community leader that's always in the field, blessing our citizens by keeping it real, so they too can be the best that they can be, with industry, technology, and higher paying jobs, by helping our citizens to prosper and survive, with the spirit of excellence that can't be ignored, so our children can dream the impossible dreams, as they all stand together with our commissioner team in the halls of greatness in this beautiful place, where the spirit of love is touched by grace. Yes, our commissioners are truly one of a kind, with a touch of excellence that will blow your mind, for their classy style and their royal taste that's rooted and grounded in this historic place, for their leadership skills are truly unmatched, because they truly have the city's back, heroes of greatness, that's who they are, for they inspire our children to reach for the stars, as they do it with love and compassion in their hearts, by touching the mind of the learning eye to seize the vision of the promising side. Thank you, commissioners, for giving your best, for helping our city to pass every test, for this poem I wrote to honor you all on these hollow grounds and sacred walls, and I pray that God will bless you all. "The Essence of a Blessing," please stand tall.
Wow.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Pastor Frame has a very special guest with him today, too, his lovely wife, Mrs. Frame. If you would stand and be recognized. He couldn't do it without her.
Pastor Frame, thank you so much. That was absolutely wonderful. What a great way to start the meeting today.
Yeah.
I'd have to mention, though, his wife is from Gaston County.
Ladies and gentlemen, we also have another very special presentation, who will be presenting the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask Mrs. Daley Hill to please stand and come to the podium, and if you will just turn around and face the audience real quick. As an introduction, Daley Hill is eight years old, and in her first ever running track with the Tallahassee Zoom Track Club, where she competed in the 100-meter and 200-meter dash. Daley competed all summer long and was able to take her talents all the way to Eugene, Oregon, last month, wherein she medaled in the 100-meter and the 200-meter dash with silver medals in both. Daley's race times sit her within the top three fastest times in the United States for any girl. The top three fastest times in the United States for any girl eight and under in both the United States Association of Track and Field and the Amateur Athletic Union. Daley has earned the distinction of being a four-time All-American, two in USATF, and two in AAU. Ladies and gentlemen, leading us in the pledge today, Mrs. Daley Hill. Daley?
All right, Daley. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Daley. Daley, I know I speak for the entire city of Tallahassee community when we say we are so very proud of you, all of your accomplishments, and how you represent our great city on a national competitive level. Keep up the great work, and it's an honor and a privilege to have you here today, leading the Pledge of Allegiance. And I want to thank Mayor Pro Tim for the recommendation and the suggestion. I mean, folks, we're going to have a great day. How better way to start off this meeting than with that incredible invocation, and also having one of our superstars lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may take a point of personal privilege?
Yes, ma'am.
Her dad and mom are here, and there may be other family members. Her dad, Ryan Hill, you know, a track star himself and football player from Rikers High School.
Go Raiders.
And University of Miami is in the back of the room, and his aunt and uncle are also in the city of Tallahassee family, Alicia Hill, PIO for TPD, and Officer Justin Hill
That's right.
as well. So greatness is being manifest through this young lady, and I don't know if grandmother is here, is Ann here? I know she was, she asked me how to get her. There's grandmother in the back, Ann, black. So the whole family is here, and they're longtime community members doing great things in our community, so thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we're at Agenda Modifications. Mr. Manager, do we have any modifications to the agenda today?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Items 803, 809, and 823 were requested to be pulled.
Okay.
They've been renumbered as 901, 902, 903, respectively. In addition, questions will be asked regarding items 8.15 through 8.19.
8.15 through nine, okay.
8.19, so we will renumber those, we will pull those and renumber them as items 904, 905, 906, 907, and 908.
Wonderful. Okay, so bottom line is, we've got several items that have been pulled off consent, and we'll just have the manager walk us through it when we get to that part of the agenda. Any questions, colleagues? We're good? Okay, moving on. We have no presentations today. We don't have any announcements before the City Commission. We don't have any appearances by other appointed boards or governmental entities. We are now on the consent agenda.
Move consent.
All right. Consent agenda has been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, segmented by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comments? Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, we did have one speaker in addition to those that the manager identified. We did have an item, a speaker on item 8.05. I don't believe that was one of the ones that we just pulled, but we just got that here as we were getting started with our meeting.
All right, colleagues, any problem with pulling 8.05 to allow public comment? Okay, so be it. So the motion on the table for the consent agenda is for everything that has not been pulled. Are we clear on the motion on the table?
Yes.
All right, moving forward. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are now on the consent agenda items that have been pulled. Mr. Manager, I'm going to turn it over to you for the first item, please.
Yes, sir. I will put that 8.05 at the end of that list, if that's okay.
Sure.
And we'll begin with item 901. This item is, they're seeking approval to apply for the 2023 Resilient Florida Grant for Blueprint Capital Cascades Trail Segment Four. The grant application would be for approximately $5 million, and it seeks your authorization to authorize myself as city manager to accept the grant award and execute all necessary documents if approved. I believe I have... Someone, I've got Wayne Tetter, maybe Autumn Calder here, is here to answer any questions you might have on this.
Was this pulled by a member of the board or for public comment?
This is pulled by Commissioner Porter.
Okay, Commissioner Porter, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a few clarifying questions, if anyone was available to answer them.
Yes, ma'am.
I think Ms. Calder, blueprint director is here, as well as Assistant City Manager Tetter.
Thank you. I pulled this item because I had a few questions, and it's, I plan to support the item. I think it's obviously what we should be doing, applying for outside sources of funding. I just, my question is, if we receive this funding, will that be, is the plan currently that that would replace existing funding that we've allocated, or that it would be in addition to the funding we've set aside for this project?
Currently, the project is, Alex is budgeted $19.9 million, and that fulfills the needs of the project, so if we're lucky enough to be awarded, then it would replace the roughly $5 million of that $19.9.
Okay, and for that, and I mean, we're going to be having a meeting tomorrow that, you know, is, we know about. Is there a plan, then, for what that $5 million would go to? Would it go to another project? Is there anything that we could do to enhance this project that we need additional funding for, or are there any thoughts about that currently?
Yeah, the grant would be specifically applied towards the stormwater and production improvements. We would want to work through the rest of the design of the project to see as we update the cost estimates for the project. So I think we'd want to wait and see if we get the grant first, and then start looking at the project details and see what the scope requires.
Okay, and... Well, I'll save the rest of my questions for tomorrow's meeting, I guess, about this. Thank you.
Okay.
Your staff recommendation, Mr.?
Second. Real quick, any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do have one speaker on this item. It's a virtual speaker, and that is Max Epstein.
Okay. Mr. Epstein, are you with us?
I am.
Excellent. Name and address for the record, please, and you have three minutes, and the clerk will let you know when you're at 30 seconds.
Thank you. 1001 San Luis Road. I just wanted to speak on this in support of applying for this grant. I do have the same concerns about subtracting funding from this project instead of adding to it. If you remember, a item came back to you for a large-scale wetland treatment system for Lake Munson. You can apply this anywhere in the watershed. Its estimate was $30 million. In review of many of these resilience grants of projects that had large amounts of funding, this $20 million, many of them got $10 to $20 million worth of funding from the state. This is an excellent opportunity to apply for more funding with the original scope of this project. It's important to note that this is the same area as the brownfield that you'll be discussing later, that feeds directly to Lake Munson, and it's also part of the Airport Gateway Project that will have its own stormwater systems. You probably got Commissioner Caban's note about wanting to pause the Airport Gateway Project. This is also an excellent opportunity to integrate those, all three of those projects into one, and that will make it very attractive to the state to give, I believe, that $10-plus million in grant funding. I've also been in discussion with Talithia Edwards. She couldn't make the meeting, but she has a lot of concerns about this Capital Cascades project. It doesn't have redevelopment capacity, doesn't have a lot of other things that were promised originally, and it seems like we're putting the horse, you know, the cart before the horse, and approving all this stuff without even discussing it. Commissioner Porter's item hasn't come back to Blueprint. If you also take a look at Blueprint's analysis, the Blueprint's analysis itself shows that this current project is insufficient to mitigate existing flooding or reduce nutrient loads. It does help take about half of the structures out in Callan, out of the 100-year flood zone, but that leaves over half of them left in the water when a 100-year storm comes along, and the 500-year floodplain is even worse.
You're at 30 seconds.
So I just wanted to support this. However, I think there's a much better way to complete this project and get more money from the state. It's just going to take a little political will and listening to each other tomorrow at the budget discussion to figure out how to make this the best project it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
That's the only speaker on this item.
Okay, going back, Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I support this item as well. I just want to say, you know, as we have the conversations at Blueprint, and we see ballooning budgets, and we start to figure out how we're going to fund all these projects, what should be reduced, what should be expanded, I think this is just a great effort by the city to reach out for outside funding, to continue to make sure we can deliver on the things we told the public we were working towards. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So Commissioner Richardson, I believe, made the motion for approval of the item, segmented by the Mayor Pro Tim. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Mr. Manager, our next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item, 902, previously item 809, is seeking your approval to market a .78-acre portion of the North Bicycle Boulevard surplus parcel, that is in the College Town area, for a sale through the competitive bid solicitation. Robert Culver-House, our director of real estate, is here with any details that you might like to have on that. Commissioner Porter pulled this item as well.
Excellent. Commissioner Porter, you are recognized.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers on this item?
We do have one speaker on this item.
You want to hear the speaker first?
Yes, please.
And then come back? Okay. Let's go to the public comment.
Mayor, as with the previous item, we have one speaker, that is Max Epstein.
Mr. Epstein, are you still with us, sir?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak on this item here. Number one, I appreciate that this is being marketed instead of being granted to a request, but however, I wanted to bring to your attention that the warehouse, which is a really important local historic place, is on this parcel, and I'm hoping that you all would consider, instead of marketing it, to do a land swap and work with a developer to preserve the eastern portion of that. That warehouse can actually be picked up and moved. It can be moved anywhere on that parcel. If you look at the assemblage that the developer has, there's a weird little finger portion of it to the east where it could be moved, and if we're talking about trying to help our arts and music, that venue cannot be recreated. If you remember, the TLH Arts proposal was for about $6 million for a 300-seat theater. Well, you can fit about 150 people inside of that, and people have been playing poets, musicians, everyone else in that building for decades. I believe that there's a way to work with this developer to create a better project, and bringing this under the city control to have a performing arts venue in the heart of College Town and on Game Street would be an incredible addition to our portfolio. It really is the best small music venue in Tallahassee. If you've ever been there, it's filled with hard pine from longleaf pines, old growth trees that were cut down to build it. It cannot be recreated. Trying to work with the developer to reshape their building may make it easier for them and be a win for our community. I truly hope you consider it, and if this property only brings $250,000, as the item says, well, it would cost you probably $2 to $3 million to recreate or even get something close to that venue again. Seems like a really great way to work with the developer, to surplus the land and do a swap. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker.
No additional speakers on this item.
Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this item because I was contacted, we were all contacted by Kathleen Spahar from COCA, and she was not able to be here today. What I was hoping we might, we might do is pause on this to see if there is a willingness from the developer to do something with the warehouse site. The Bradfordville Blues Club, as we know, closed. They have been in discussion with COCA about maybe using the warehouse as a venue. I have not spoken to the developer. It's not my impression that the city has either about any of this, and please correct me if I'm wrong. Have we spoken about this in particular with COCA?
No, we have not. The only communications we've had with the developer is their interest in the city on property.
Okay, so I mean, I don't, is there any harm in waiting till our next meeting, in pausing this to see if there, if this is something that COCA can pursue with, with the developer, to have that kind of discussion?
I really, I can't speak on the developer's timeframe, but I don't believe it is any issue with our timeframe.
Okay, well, I mean, and that would be my motion, is if we'd be willing to pause on this to allow COCA the time to have that conversation, in case that's something that that might be worked out. You know, when I first moved to Tallahassee, the warehouse is one of the first places that I went, and for a poetry reading, and we know that there's a need for a middle-level venue, but it's more about giving COCA the opportunity, if there is a way to make this happen. I would love to give them that opportunity if there's nothing especially pressing about putting this out to bid right away.
Commissioner Porter's got a motion on the table to postpone action on this item until the next meeting, segmented by Commissioner Richardson. I do want to ask, Robert, will you come up and just describe the item before us?
Certainly.
Robert, and let me make sure we cover this piece, too, the encumbrance and easement on the property, the fact that it can't be developed, I think that's, that's germane to this conversation, if you'll include that, please.
Correct, correct. The city purchased a very large chunk of rail corridor back several decades ago, and the purpose of that purchase was to enhance redevelopment along the Game Street corridor. This is one of the items we have left, and we consider this to be our North Bike Boulevard. There is an alleyway that runs through there. Several years ago, an adjacent developer did engage the city to grant a reciprocal ingress and egress easement, so the city property is 100% encumbered by an easement. In addition, it is under a Florida Department of Environmental Protection Declaration of Restrictive Covenant, so it would have to be cleaned up to some point, whether that's to a commercial or residential standard, if a developer were to build on the city property. This current developer, based on my conversations with them, they only want to build on their three properties.
Right, right.
Which is the frontage, and use the city property for perhaps additional density, because it would add land to their property and access as well.
Right, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, yeah, to be clear, I don't think anyone wants, well, I can't speak for, you know, but what I've heard is it's, the discussion is about what to do with the property that the developer owns, not with the property the city is looking to sell. It's just a matter of, there's good reason to believe they're interested in purchasing the property, and so if there, it's just another piece of the puzzle. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow, and Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you give us just a quick timeline on if we took a vote today or at the next meeting, for this to go out to bid, to closing?
Certainly. Certainly. If the commission were to approve the invitation for bid today, I would anticipate having the, working with procurement, having the bid on the street, so to speak, sometime in September. There would be a ranking and review of those bids in October, and then we would come back to the commission for approval of the negotiated purchase and sale agreement in December.
I just wanted to highlight, we've sold a lot of publicly-owned land without going through a competitive solicitation, and there's a very easy, already-established process that we can go through to give the public confidence in the decisions we make. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
My question is, what we're, what we're asked to do today is to approve the marketing. Marketing and going out to bid, are these synonymous or?
Yes.
Okay.
We would be, the city would be issuing an invitation for bids, which is our competitive marketing process.
That, so that's, that was a confusing point for me because I'm used to hearing invitation to bid instead of marketing, you know, because sometimes with marketing, you're just showing it to see whatever. But we're intending to put it out, out to bid. And I don't have a problem with, with the pause, but even if we put it out to bid, there's nothing to say that you have to accept and move forward with any bids that you receive, correct?
That is correct.
So moving forward today doesn't mean that Coca and anyone else won't have time to get with the developer. It just means that you'll be on a timeline that'll get you closer to doing whatever we're going to do before the end of the year.
Correct.
Okay. I just, I just wanted that clarification because I do receive the letter from, from Coca, but in all of these decisions, it requires money. It requires funding of some sort. And so if the, the reason for pausing is to see if the, something, as Mr. Epstein said, if it can come under city, if some other parts can come under city control or what have you, what does that mean? Who pays for it? Where does that money come from? You know, so I just wanted to make sure we understand that all of these are money decisions, and the money has to come from somewhere. And even if it's a nonprofit, if the nonprofit is interested in the nonprofit, then we'll also need to have some skin in the game financially to make this happen. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Commissioner Porter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that, but part of that, too, is the language of the bidding process. I mean, there's a part of that, too. I mean, they're at the very early stages of having this conversation. I think it's, no one is suggesting the city buy this. I mean, it's privately owned. I just want to make that clear. That's not my intention. My intention is just to give Coca some time to, to speak to the developer, to see if there's something that, a way that that property can be preserved or used for an entertainment purchase. I mean, it's been sitting vacant for many years now. I know they want to develop that parcel and do something with it.
Mr. Mayor, on point.
On point.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Porter. There's nothing that prevents them from having that conversation, even if we approve this today. There's nothing to prevent them from working with the developer, even after we've agreed to put it out to bid.
That's correct.
Because the bid can be pulled back.
Yeah, the warehouse property is privately owned, so it would be a discussion between the developer and another private organization. It would not involve the city of Tallahassee.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood it.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to, to, yeah, support what, the motion, but I certainly understand what Commissioner Williams Cox or Mayor Pro Tem Williams Cox is mentioning here. And I, I would want to make it clear that if we do move forward with this by pausing it today or going ahead with the motion to advertise for bid, that we make it clear that it is not assumed that the city is going to do the transportation of, or moving of the building, the renovation, or ultimate ownership of that building and property that it's on. Because I, that is a whole nother discussion, as Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, as to where would that, is the city interested in that type of facility? And if so, where would that money come from? And as you all know, we're about to finalize our budget for the year, and so that would be another conversation we'd have to have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Motion's on table, made by Commissioner Porter, postpone action till the next meeting, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. Robert, thank you very much. Our next item, I believe, Madam Attorney, you were going to be handling for us?
Yes, Mayor.
Wonderful.
Item number 9.03 is the approval of revisions to the Citizen Police Review Board's policies and procedures. On September 23rd, 2020, the City Commission adopted an ordinance approving the creation of the Citizens Police Review Board as codified at Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 4, Tallahassee Code of Laws. Simultaneously with the adoption of this, these code provisions, the City Commission adopted the policies and procedures. Section 7 of the policies and procedures provides that the city's legal council shall annually review the Citizen Police Review Board's policies and procedures and evaluate for revision, submitting any proposed revisions to the City Commission for approval. This agenda item provides proposed revisions to the policies and procedures for consideration and approval of the City Commission. The following explanations and clarifications are recommended and proposed as amendments to the Citizens Police Review Board policies and procedures based on the specified purpose and duties of the board as reflected in the adopted code provisions. Number one, the addition of two definitions, disposition of an internal affairs investigation and department policies and procedures. This change is recommended because there was, there were questions by the board as to what, what was disposition in terms of the internal affairs investigations when they were looking at the reports. And so disposition is defined as the final determination as to whether the complaint was sustained, exonerated, unsubstantiated, anything of that nature. As to department policies and procedures, that is defined as the general orders of the police department or their standard operating procedures. Secondly, there is a clarification of the duties that are specified in Section 2-53 Tallahassee Code of Laws. So sometimes questions came up above, among the board members as to doing other things other than were specified in the code. And this particular section clarifies that they are to perform the specific duties laid out in the code, which, and they are not to perform such things as make recommendations regarding collective bargaining agreements, review the Tallahassee Police Department budget, press conferences, or press releases. Thirdly, specifically stating the requirements of being unbiased. And that definition, that unbiased is defined in the policies and procedures as impartial, fair, and objective. Number four, authorizing the chair to cancel board meetings if the work permits. So if there is an opportunity to cancel, perhaps because the board members are each individually working on determining some best practice, there is an opportunity for the chair to cancel those meetings. Number five, establishing three, a three-minute public comment limit in accordance with City Commission Policy 108. Commission Policy 108 states that the meetings of committees and boards shall be three minutes for public comment. The purpose of this provision is to maintain public decorum and obviously to give an opportunity for the board members to have time for deliberations. Number six, designating the TPD ombudsman to ensure that only closed internal affairs investigations are provided to the board instead of the administrator. In practice, this is what occurs because the police department has the responsibility for the internal affairs investigation. And number seven, clarifying the board responsibilities regarding the gathering of information for an annual report. Here, the policies were clarified to provide that at the beginning of the year, the board members would, would generally decide what they wanted to see in their report and then assign different members to actually proceed with those matters.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do have several speakers on this item.
Okay. Commissioner Porter, you pulled the item. Do you want to provide comment first or go straight to the public comment?
Public comment, please.
All right. Clerk.
Our first speaker is Barry Monroe, followed by Bernard Stevens. As with our other portions, speakers will have three minutes. I will look again, but I don't believe we have anyone connected virtually on this one. They're all here in chambers.
How many, how many speakers do we have on this?
Four.
Okay. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Barry Monroe, and I live at 1248 Halifax Court. I am very concerned by the direction of some of the changes. There are some changes that make sense, but all of the changes tend to negate the powers and authority of the board to listen cogently, quietly to the public. Often while I was on the board, there were instances where issues would come up in the media. A use of police, the use of police force was believed to be in excess in much of those incidents. There was one that was on high road where there was a DUI arrest that was made that was very misunderstood by the public. And the board serves as a mechanism to try to explain to the public these current policies and what's being done and how police are using the current policy and procedure, and it is working and they're actually following that. I don't see how the board would be able to communicate effectively with the public unless it releases a public, a press release or something announcing what it has done with what it is recommending to the chief of police to do, because the board is only advisory. And the other thing that disturbs me is the budget of the police is a public document that can be reviewed by any citizen. So why wouldn't the Citizens Police Review Board be able to review it? May not be able to change it, may not be able to make recommendations as to the final disposition of the budget, but to actually review it and to understand what citizens are explaining to the board, some of their concerns are? So I would say that this is a step in the wrong direction. I, I think that you need to think very cogently about cutting back the hours. I also question, and while I was on the board, we had excellent staff with the Inspector General Dennis Sutton, but I see a lot of changes in this document that sort of hint on whether or not there needs to be additional staff or support to the board in order to do its job. And so one of the issues that I think is very clear, and we never had this come up on the board, but we always had a very good relationship with the chief of police. And when we made our recommendations back and forth, he accepted some of them and he explained why he did not accept others. And that's all in good. But there will come a time someday where there would be disagreement between the board and the chief of police.
You have about 15 seconds.
There should be some mechanism, hopefully, to come back to the City Commission in order to get that air out in public while that is being taken care of through the current procedures and policies that are in place. So thank you very much for listening, and I really hope that you move in the right direction with this. I have no idea why.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Bernard Stevens is next, and then Stanley Sims.
Your name and address for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
All right. My name is Bernard Stevens. My address is 2502 Holden Street. My brothers and sisters, I stand before you today as a humble servant and a citizen. But what I do not understand is for the life of me of why our police review board constantly cannot get nothing done because their hands are always tied. On top of that, you give the citizens three minutes to speak and then think we're going to get all that out in three minutes. We have seniors in the building. They need more than three minutes. So what I think that needs to happen is the police, we need a police commissioner, for one. Someone needs to be ahead of that department because the way this is going is going in circles and we holding up time and progress for our community. There needs to be healing. There cannot be healing until we work together. In order for us to work together, we got to get let go. You know what that mean, Mr. Gold? That means sometimes you got to sit there and listen to people and understand where they're coming from instead of making decisions for us and not hearing us. I think for the life of me, one report that you give and say, hey, it's an annual review, when there's an incident that comes up, the public needs to be made aware. You're making it aware when we shoot somebody. You're making it aware when somebody gets in an accident. The news is constantly putting us in shambles. And yet instead, we got city government up here who does not seem to understand that the public is literally trying to work with you, but you're working against us. The citizens want to be heard. When I say heard, I mean heard. Implement more than three minutes for speaking. Give them time to express themselves. If we cannot do that, then I think for me, the Citizen Police Review Board needs to just be abolished because for the, they're not getting nothing done. They can't say nothing. It's basically wasting time. We don't even have members on the board, which we're lacking. And I'm trying to figure out for the life of me, why do we keep going in circles? The citizens deserves answers. And Ms. Jackson, I'm just asking you with all due respect, ma'am, consider the facts that are at hand. Citizens cannot just get together, me, put a department together and say, oh, well, we're going to submit this, and then when it gets back to us, we're going to turn around and say, oh, well, there's nothing we can do. It's in a collective bargaining agreement. Our police need to be transparent. They have immunity and the citizens don't. So let's be fair across the board. Give us what it is our tax dollars pay for, and that's respect. All we want is respect and peace. That shouldn't be too difficult for all of us. We're all children of God. It don't matter what color you are, you all are children of God, and we have to work together. Peace and unity. Peace and unity. If you don't want to do that, we got elections coming up in 2024, and I promise you, the people going to speak because we are the ones who put you all in place. So it's time for you to take them handcuffs off of us and let us free. I digress my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Stanley Sims, followed by Dorothy Enman Johnson.
Right. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. I just want to say for the public, that's not an angry black man, that's passion. The reason I rose today is because the Bible says, in all of thy getting, get an understanding. And Ms. Jackson, I, I want to apologize because I made an oath that I don't like coming to this dais unless I'm educated. I don't want to say on things on what I think. But based on what I've skimmed in the documentation, here are my concerns. The last that we heard of this board publicly, members of this commission kicked folks off. So it was my understanding that the process of this board was that before recommendations would come to this commission, they would be filtered through the board. So how was these recommendations filtered through the board when it ain't no board? And then you might say, well, we didn't run it through that board. We ran it through Mr. Ferguson's board, but when is your board? My point is, Ms. Jackson, is you have a former board member who've come up here. You see how calm I am, Mr. Stevens? You got to do this because if you do it three times in a row, they're going to make you an angry black man. You have to, you, you, you set a policy and you tell us that it's going to work one way, but then you have then thrown it away. And what concerns me is, I just got beat up last week, and the deputy that has investigated my case, he's trying to convince me that it's an uphill mountain for me to press charges until I just stopped him in the middle of his talk and say, listen, I'm an ex-felon. It wasn't that hard for them to come after me.
You're at 30 seconds.
And so what I'm asking is, to thine own self be true. You promised that you would vet these before it come to you, so how can you vote on this stuff if it has not been vetted? Get your house back in order.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Dorothy Enman Johnson. This is the final speaker we have on this item.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Dorothy Enman Johnson, 2121 Trescott Drive, Tallahassee. The purpose of the Citizens Police Review Board is to engender trust between the citizens, the residents, and the police department. If you are going to pass this collection of changes to the policies that If you are going to pass this collection of changes to the policies that, in, in all of them together, hits the concerns of residents against the city recommendations and the police, how do you create the trust? When the board was first created, people thought it would be a channel for citizens to have concerns brought forward that they didn't feel could go directly through the police department and then to the police and then to the city commission. I read every one of the changes and read in the proposal. And collectively, they deny citizens more opportunities to get their voices heard on issues of concern that might arise. We have a good police department. But one comedian said, there are some jobs where you can't have any bad apples. The police department is one of those places. And if citizens can't have the, the trust that they have somebody they can come to or funnel their concerns through, then the citizens' police review board, as the gentleman said earlier, may as well not exist. Because what it's done with these changes is tie the hands of the board even more than they were originally.
You're at about 20 seconds. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That was the last speaker on this item, Mayor.
Great. Commissioner Porter, you pulled the item. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled the item first and foremost because I just, on principle, this is an issue that is clearly of, of importance to the public. And I consent, I think, is appropriate for routine matters. And I didn't see this as being routine. I've spoken at length with the inspector general, with our city attorney about some of these revisions. I, I think the main, the main changes that, that I was really uncomfortable with were limiting, limiting the board to only meeting once a month. I support the change that gives the chair the ability to cancel a meeting if they want to, but I think limiting the board to only meeting once a month is, is problematic. I know that the board had established subcommittees and there are certainly times like we've seen where there are issues, there might be an event, whether it's local or national, where the public wants to meet more than once a month. And I think the body, the board should be given that ability if they want to meet more than once a month, whether it's as a subcommittee or not. So that was one concern, concern that I had. I also had a concern about the prohibiting any kind of, you know, public statement or, or, you know, press release, something that other boards that we have are able to do. And I think that that is consistent with the mission of the CPRB to ensure relationship of trust and respect, to review issues of importance and interest to the community, to increase and demonstrate police accountability and credibility with the public. So there are other changes that, that I may not, you know, frankly feel great about, but those were the two, the two changes that were most concerning to me and that I just don't feel like I can, like I can support. So I can make a motion, but I'm, I'm sure there's other comment from, from others that I, so I can wait to make a motion or go ahead now for the sake of discussion.
Other comment. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate your comments. Commissioner Porter, I, well, I think if we start from the beginning of, of when this board was created, the question to me has really been, what problem are we actually trying to solve? And, and I think this board was formed after public protests after the George Floyd incident. There were lots of call for more citizen oversight over the police department. And frankly, this board was, I think, formed as a consolation prize of, here's, here's something you can do that might not be exactly what you're asking for. So it was created as a board with a small scope to review, to review these use of force incidences and make recommendations to, to, to the, to the chief. But I think what we're seeing in the community is we're missing the mark on a lot of needs. There's a need to have a forum for people to come express themselves when they feel there's an injustice in the community. And this board has kind of taken on that role because people felt like there was no other place to go to, to express this, you know? That's on, that's on our shoulders as, as a government. I think as issues arise, people need a, an open and honest forum to have that discussion and, and make the recommendations as, as needed. So I know this board has caused a lot of frustration. I've heard it both from board members and from staff based on, you know, what they're able to do, what they are doing, what they want to do, and what they as board members individually feel like this, this role, this board should serve. And we've heard it a lot, I think, in the public comment tonight. And I think, you know, ultimately, this board should give everybody in our community the confidence that they're just regular people, making sure we're doing the right thing and everything we do. And then if we can accomplish that with the board, then, then it has a purpose. But right now, I think, I mean, we have a board that hasn't met in six months, nine, nine months. I don't even know how long it's been. And we've had lots of public outcry over what was happening in TPD. And we saw that with the meth use. We've seen different incidents and people don't know what forum or who to go to to, to voice their opinion. So that problem ultimately needs to be solved. I agree, Commissioner Porter, on, on the time because if it's limited to once a month and something crazy happens the day after your meeting, people are gonna want to speak on it, not 29 days, days later. If we want this board to serve its function of being able to respond appropriately in times of crisis when things are actually bad, so the people have a place to voice their opinion and make a recommendation based on an independent board to the city or to the chief, there needs to be some flexibility in that timeline. So if, if, I, I would support those changes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Other comments. Commissioner Richardson, Mayor Pro Tim, and then I'll weigh in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'm gonna correct Commissioner Matlow. This board was never put together for oversight of the police department.
Correct.
Exactly. That's what I said. I said it was after people were asking for oversight, this is what was created instead.
Okay. Then my mistake. I thought you said that it was created for oversight of the police department. And, 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 you know, I, I think that, you know, what we're trying to do is establish a, a board that, that functions based on what we initially thought were the duties and responsibilities of that board. And I think what we found was that there were people on the board taking it upon themselves to go beyond what was expected because it wasn't clarified in the policies of the board. And so what the attorney and our auditor, inspector general have done is to make sure that the duties and responsibilities of this board are clearly articulated in its policies and procedures. I think that if, well, you know, I, I guess when you're not involved in the community, you're not out there to get input from the community on an individual basis, that's what I do. People ask me, Curtis, when do you sleep? Because I take it upon myself to be involved in the community to where people don't have to come to a citizen police review board meeting. They don't have to come to city hall. They see me in the community and they pull me to the side and talk to me personally about the issues that are impacting their neighborhoods and their communities. That's number one. We have city commission meetings twice a month. Nobody is limited to going to a citizen police review board to air their grievances with the city, with the police department, with the chief. They can come to city commission meetings and do that. They are not limited to the city. I'm gonna let you finish your cough if you, okay. Thank you. And so to say that people are limited to being able to air their grievances or frustrations once a month because they can't go to the city committed, citizen police review board does not limit where they can have input. And so I'm, I'm gonna support what our attorney and the inspector general have come to us with. My appointee to the board, based on what I heard in the media, said that he's okay with it. He's willing to give these a try. This is not etched in stone. If something is not working, we can come back with input from the board and change it if they feel that it needs to be changed. So this doom and gloom that everybody is talking about is not the doom and gloom that you try to make it out to be. We're in the community. I'm in the community. I can't speak for anybody else. I'm in the community and I'm hearing what people have to say about what we do here at city hall. And I think what we have here is a good starting place to clarify what the duties and responsibilities of this board are. And I believe it will engender trust on the part of the residents that we serve. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, my questions are, would like to direct to the city attorney to provide clarification as well as the treasurer clerk, who also administers the other boards and committees that we have. Is there any other committee that engages with the public via a press release or press conference?
My understanding, the city commission's boards and committees do not do that. It is a, they are boards and committees of the city commission and therefore act according to the, the direction you have given them.
Mr. Mayor.
Ben Fish.
It's on point.
I'll come to you in just a second.
Okay. I, thank you. And I want, I saw Mr. Cook said, are you?
Oh. City attorney spoke accurately. Each board has its own bylaws, but I'm not aware of any that refer to that operation.
Okay. Is there any board or committee of the city commission that limits or allows for more than three minutes of public comment per person?
Not to my knowledge.
Same.
So in these changes, what we're trying to do is what we've done with the other boards, but we didn't have to spell it out with the other boards. But we found that based on experience on what, and I'm, I've not attended these meetings, so based on what the inspector general and I've heard from the attorney, that these things are, this, this is input from the, from the board based on their experiences. And so what we're trying to do is to make sure that we're treating our boards and committees the same. And so I, I, I see us bringing this in alignment. But you know, the other thing is that the scope of the CR, the CPRB has not changed. When you look at the marked document, that, it didn't change. It's, the scope was purposefully and legally put this way based on what's happening in the state of Florida, according to what we can do via the legislature and what other boards like this were, are actually doing. And every member who joined it received training of what these requirements were and agreed to them. Am I, am I correct? Inspector general, treasurer clerk, attorney, these were agreed to. And so what we're just basically trying to do is to say that we need to follow what was written and in the event that it's not because the board was created by this commission, that this commission has the, has the authority to make adjustments and make changes and make clarifications as it sees fit. Am, am I wrong?
It is a board of the city commission, yes.
So with, with that, and I know Commissioner Porter wants, wants to say something on point, Mayor, and I'd like to hear it, but I too will be supporting these, these changes because this is not the first time we've seen this. We, we received this information in briefings. I was contacted by the attorney to ask me if I had a problem with it being on consent. And I didn't have a problem with it being on consent if everybody else was in favor of it being on consent. And when I saw it on consent, I knew that the city attorney had gotten everybody's agreement to put it on consent. So of, of course, we reserve the right to pull it. But if we had all, if Madam Attorney would not have put it on consent, had she not had the agreement from all of us to put it there. So that's why it was there in the first place. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I had my own conversations with our city attorney and please do not speak about my conversations with our city attorney during our briefings and what my intentions were or what I spoke about with her.
You're referring to me?
Yes.
I, I didn't. I didn't. I talked about my experience.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. Commissioner Porter, go ahead.
Because I communicated pretty clearly my discomfort with this item. She was aware of that and it was always the understanding that I may or may not pull it from consent and that there's no issue between us on that matter. I served on the commission on the status of women and girls. Others of us have served on different boards. We have policies in our bylaws about speaking to the press, about release, publishing press releases. The chairs of each subcommittee are given the authority through the bylaws to speak on behalf of those committees to do so. It's simply not true that no other commit, no other body has that authority. We want to review that. That's something we can do, whether it's been a problem or not. I think we all agree this board is, is unique. It's different than some of the other advisory boards that we have. And that's a decision and a discussion that we're having right now as to whether it's appropriate or not. But I can speak from experience that other commissions or that at least one has that. It also has the ability, we do not limit, we did not, any speaker to three minutes. At the same time, we didn't have as much public interest like this board does. Now, I agree with Commissioner Richardson that this is not the only forum for people to, to express themselves. And just as important as it is for every member to speak, it's also important that other members of the public not have to wait three hours to speak as well. I mean, we've got to consider, you know, other attendees. I was really specific about the items that I, that I can't support that are recommended here. There's more than seven. There's seven that are listed. I don't think a single one do I, am I opposing except for two very specific items. So I just want to make that clear. I also would just like to make the point, you know, I think we're all involved in the community. We're all listening. I'm getting calls, you know, that, and that is an important part of what we do, but that doesn't mean as well that, look, this is why we're having this discussion. I'm making it clear, I disagree. I think it's important that this board meet more, have the ability to meet more than once. It's what I have heard when I've spoken to board members, both current and past, and, and that's, that's my position. But I did especially want to clarify, it is tru, it is true that other boards, at least one, has that, has that ability. And it's also true that we can revisit it. But, you know, this, this is where I stand on, on this item. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim for a motion.
Move, move, staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. There's a proper motion for staff recommendation in a second. I'm gonna weigh in as well and I'm gonna support the motion on the table. First of all, I want to thank Madam Attorney and Inspector General, not only for staffing, First of all, I want to thank Madam Attorney and Inspector General, not only for staffing this particular board, but for the hard work you've been putting in over the course of the summer. I, I kind of see it as technical changes, to be honest with you, bringing it in line with our policy. Our policy does state that all of the city commission citizen boards do not have press availability. We, we, that's pretty standard across the board, and I don't think that this one is any different. When we look at the creation of this board, and the three of us have had many conversations about this, it was very narrow in focus. It did, as Commissioner Matlow did say, you know, it did come out of the George Floyd murder that took place in the national and international conversation. Specifically, the charge for this board, the Tallahassee Police Citizen Review Board, was number one, to have a citizen review board for all officer-involved shootings. Number two, to have a review board for all incidences of excessive force or perceived excessive force for public review. And number three, to have a citizens' review board to have the opportunity to review all policies associated with the Tallahassee Police Department. Now, I will say, I am very pleased with the work that they did. The initial review of the Tallahassee Police Department board policies was very thorough, and the members that are here, I appreciate you, and I thank you for the work that you did. And as it was mentioned, some recommendations were accepted, some recommendations weren't, but explained why. What we also learned through this review policy is that the Tallahassee Police Department's use-of-force policy is a current 21st century policy that actually serves as the model for other law enforcement agencies across the country, which is something we should all be proud of, that we stay on top of. And on top of that, we should continue to review the policies and procedures and work with the police department. In my mind, this is not the forum for us to discuss the broader issues. That forum is the Tallahassee Police Department Citizen Advisory Committee. And I want to thank Pastor Rudy Ferguson, I don't know if you're still serving, but you did serve as the chair. This is the body, and I believe there's between 40 and 50 members of this body. It's a large body that represents a large swath of this community that does get together, that does talk about the relationships with our neighborhoods, that does talk about community policing, that does talk about how we can do better and always work hard to establish the relationships between law enforcement and our children, and our places of worship, our neighborhoods, and our businesses. That is the appropriate forum for these much larger community conversations, and I think that the Citizens Advisory Council has done a tremendous job also of hosting those conversations and will continue to do so. Do not confuse the mission of the two entities. The police review board, narrow scope, officer-involved shooting, use-of-force incidences, and a complete thorough review of police department policy. Citizens Advisory Council, bigger community conversation, community involvement, participation in the department, trust-building exercises, and the like. And I want to thank both. The item before us, I do see us helping to reshape and focus on where we're going. I'm looking forward to this board making the appointments in the very near future. I believe at the next meeting, we have the item coming back for more appointments to the, to the board, and we're gonna move forward. I will be supporting the motion on the table. Any further comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson.
I just wanted to add, add to that there is also a youth advisory council.
Correct.
Which also engages in those same types of activities, engendering trust and putting information to the community as it relates to the Tallahassee Police Department.
Correct. Commissioner Matlow and then Commissioner Porter.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll just say, I, I think this would become the only city board, including ours, that doesn't have the ability to call for a, a special meeting to, to react to ongoing public issues. So I'll make a substitute motion that we scratch the line, but not more frequently than monthly, and we reinstate the line, additional meetings can be called at the discretion of, of the chair, with just those two changes.
I'll second that.
Well, can we just do a friendly amendment to the motion on the table? Mayor Protem, if, if there is a need for a, an additional meeting providing the policy language that allows?
Um, point of clarification from Madam Attorney. Um, the, I thought the language said something about the quarterly. Could you read that, read that, read that part for Madam Attorney?
Uh, the amendment is, the CR, the CPRB shall meet at, as its work may require, but not more frequently than monthly. At the discretion of the chair, any meetings may be canceled. However, at a minimum, the CPRB shall meet on a quarterly basis. The ordinance itself requires meeting on a quarterly basis.
Okay. At a minimum.
At a minimum, but they could, so, so basically, they can meet monthly.
Yes.
Right. Already, based on these, these requirements. And so Commissioner Matlow, you're asking that if there is a need to meet more than monthly, that the chair can call a meeting more than monthly?
Correct.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. The motion is amended. All right, Commissioner Porter.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to say, that's what I was asking for the whole time.
Motion has been amended on the floor, made by the Mayor Protem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. We are still on consent items that have been pulled. Mr. Manager, our next item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is, was previously item 8.15, now numbered as 9.04 on your agenda. It seeks your authorization to apply for a springs restoration grant through the Northwest Florida Water Management District and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. This item and the next item are related in seeking of grants for our water and wastewater systems. Steve Schaefer is our general manager of Underground Utilities. He's here if you have any detailed questions.
Excellent.
This item was noted by a citizen as wishing to come in on it.
Okay, folks, we pulled this item because we got a public comment on this particular item, so seeing no commissioner who has pulled it, Mr. Clerk, let's go to public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the speaker on this item is Stephen Martin. He is connected via Webex and should be there.
Mr. Martin, are you with us?
Yes, I am with you, but I don't believe this is, yeah, I, I don't believe this is item I thought I had indicated. I said, I had 8.17, 8.18, and 8.19, two of which involve canopy. Now, I'm all for getting a grant to help with water quality.
Excellent.
But items that I had asked for are not this. It was 8.17, 8.18, and 8.19, which have already been passed by consent.
Okay.
So I don't know if I can talk about that now or later.
Uh, Mayor, I believe those three items are among the ones that, that the manager pulled earlier, so he will have an opportunity to speak. We had him for those items, but also this one, but we will strike it on side.
Okay. I support it.
Mr. Martin, we pulled, we pulled all those items because you submitted a card, and we will come back to you.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Martin makes the motion for the item. Is there, is there a little levity? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Any further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. Our next item, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, that was item 904. Item 905 very similarly asked for your approval to apply for a grant, water quality improvement grant, through the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. This grant would total nearly $22 million.
Excellent. Any public comment on this?
No, sir, Mayor. With the clarification that Mr. Martin just provided, that he would have been the speaker on this, and he is on the next items, so none here.
Excellent. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved by the Mayor Protem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. Mr. Manager, our next item, please.
Thank you, sir. The next item, previously item 8.17, now item 906, seeks approval from the Hammock at Oak Grove Phase II subdivision plant. This is in the Bannerman Road area, if I'm correct. Our growth management director, John Reddick, is here to answer any questions.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, we have public comment?
I believe this item is one that Mr. Martin did request to speak on, and he would be the only speaker we have.
Excellent. Mr. Martin, are you still connected with us, sir?
I certainly am. And I'm gonna save you, I'm gonna save you time, because if he's got me also for 8.18, 8.19, I'm gonna talk about all three of them together.
Yes, sir.
So, okay. There's several agenda items, including a couple of your public hearings that address land development, taking land which if it were left in its current state would become woods and forest. Instead, it's being developed to accommodate population growth, which is just part of this long-term goal of promoting economic growth and development. These items that I mentioned, including the two public hearings, encompass about 1,300 acres of land, land just left alone, wood, become wooded and forested, and help address environmental problems, including what you'll be addressing later at this meeting. This has been the sacrifice of environmental value for economic development, the financial gains for the developers, or environmental losses for the rest of us. The two canopy parcels, yeah, these two aren't much acreage, less than five acres between them, but they're part of a larger development that had a history of environmental violations. And I think continuing and giving permits for these people sends the wrong message. Once developers have committed environmental regulations, they ought to have issues anytime they apply thereafter, and I think if they were barred from any more development of undeveloped land, it would send a message to all developers to think before you do, and in the long run would benefit all of us. So I think developers who have displayed a disregard for the environment already ought not to be given additional permitting to touch undeveloped land. These sites, sites that I've talked about, the public hearing tonight, and then these three, well, one of them's along Capital Circle Southeast. This is one of the public hearings. 8.17 is North Thomasville Road up by Bannerman. I tell you, when I moved here in 1980, those areas were so different. The truck route, Southwood Plantation, Southwood is not what Southwood Plantation was. The character of Tallahassee has been so, so literally turned over by development since I moved here in 1980, and is so reminiscent of what I saw happening in South Florida last century before I moved here. I, I just think it may be time to change direction and start to pay attention to what this push for population growth and economic is doing to us environmentally. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No other speakers.
All righty, is there?
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Protem and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. Our next item that's been pulled off consent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item was also referenced by the speaker. It's formerly item 8.18, now item 907 is the seeking approval for the Canopy Unit Three Phase Three Subdivision Plant.
All right, do we have any other public comments before us besides the ones that were just provided?
No, sir.
Great.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Protem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Matlow, you're recognized.
Uh, I was gonna just move both items, but.
Okay. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. Our next item that's been pulled off consent.
Yes, sir. This is the final item. It's item formerly 8.19, now 9.08. It seeks approval from the Canopy Unit Four Phase Three Subdivision Plant.
All right, do we have any other public comment besides what was already provided?
No, sir.
Excellent.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Mayor Protem, properly moved staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. That is the end of the consent agenda. We are now on city commission appointments, 10.01. Is that you, Mr. Clerk?
That is me, Mr. Mayor. I do think we had item 8.05 that was pulled at, at my observation, at the beginning of the meeting, the manager had provided a list that had been renumbered as 9.07, the ones that we just completed, but item 8.05 had also been pulled because we have a speaker in person on that item.
Okay.
So we'll take that item, which is 8.05. Uh, Mr. Manager, do you want to introduce the item?
Yes, sir. Can you tee that up for us?
My apologies. Yes, sir, that's 805, it will be renumbered for this agenda as item 909. It seeks approval to award a three-year term contract for lawn care services for the electric generating stations through TLC Lawn Care Services and authorize myself or my desert needs to negotiate and execute a contract.
All right, we have public comment on this item.
Mayor, we do have one speaker, Bernard Stevens, and we do not have any connected virtually, so this will be our only speaker.
Great. Mr. Stevens, thanks again. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Bernard Stevens, 2502 Holden Street. Um, I had an opportunity to go to the power plant over at Hopkins. It sits on 230 acres of land. That's a lot of land, and it's also a lot of power that's generated over there. But what bothers me the most is when I got on site, the landscaping is just horrible. I have a hard time understanding how the city does landscaping, but our own properties are damaged. Mr. City Manager, that falls under your perspective. Our city, if you go look at some of the stuff that we have, the water fountain over at Clement Plaza, it ain't working. You go over to Hopkins, you got stuff growing all on the trees, and this has come from years, years and years of stuff looking like this. I do not believe that at the end of the day, you should approve anything towards that power plant when we have workers in the city who are capable of getting over there and cleaning up our own property to save the taxpayers some money. Because clearly, you just proposed a budget of $43 on the taxpayers for the police department in your next budget. So maybe we can start by cutting our own budget and start producing more jobs at home. I think at this point in time, when we produce that much power, it takes a lot of components to pull that power plant, bolts, nuts, all kind of stuff. So therefore, some of that stuff, out of time, it has to be replaced, just like people. We have to be replaced at times, too. But what I do realize and what I don't understand is how is it that all these power plants and all the city properties are starting to look degraded and decapitated, but we'll sit there and cut a check out to a third party to go do our work? But we're saying we are the number one employer? We are, we're looking for people to come and work for the city? We're the employer of choice? We don't even take care of our business at home, Mr. Gold? How dare you get on TV and then crucify us on TV as if you don't even see what's going on right here in our own land and development? Our power property, it deserves to be looking number one. You know why? Because Mr., uh, I forget his name, but he's very nice. He has an audacity to sit there and say, we got the world's best power plant. And you know what I said? That's good. It was real hot in there, and while I walked over there, I said, you know what? All these things that's going on in here, if we as people just do our part and stop huffing and puffing and putting our hand on our face as if we discourage, I am more so discouraging the duplicity of the people who we have elected to serve in power. We have to have a change, and it starts with our leadership. And if you guys are the commissioners and you appoint them, then I think when it's time to come around, don't call me hostile, call me passionate, because Martin Luther King had the dream, and his dream was that all of us should be treated equal. And it's about time for our commissioners, Ms. Cox, Mr. Richardson, to step up. Birds of a feather flock together, and one thing that I know is we got to stop the foolishness because we got to work together, spirit and in truth. And you talk about the policies and procedures, your police department, the people that work for us, don't even follow the policy and procedures that's in black and white, which I have sent to you all, the preservation of integrity.
You're at three minutes.
Thank you very much. The point of clarification, the, the contract for the power plant for the maintenance of the yard, this is not a public area, right? This is secured?
Yes, sir. This is for our two power plants, the one in Waculla County at Purdum, our Purdum Power Plant, and also our Hopkins Power Plant that's in the western portion of Leon County. All of the grass and, it would be in the secured areas, grass and some trimming of bushes and things of that nature. It's, it's very much to keep it in an orderly fashion, but not, not a manicured fashion.
Right. Okay.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by the Mayor Protem. Any other further comment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. We're on item number 10.01. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a recommendation to appoint Lauren Buker to fill seat two on the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Uh, would be her first term, and she would be eligible to serve a second term at the completion of this one if she so chose.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by the Mayor Protem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item 10.02, Mr. Clerk?
This item asks for reappointment of two individuals, Patricia Swain for seat one and Scott Dick for seat four of the Downtown Improvement Authority. Both are eligible and interested in reappointment.
Excellent. Any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Commissioner Matlow, these recommendations came from y'all. Your representative, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it looks like we have both of our board members here with us today. Thank you for your service on the board. It's been a pleasure serving with you, and I'll make a motion for reappointment.
Sounds great. I'll second your motion. Motion's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by the mayor. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. On item number 10.03, Mr. Clerk?
This item is a recommendation for an appointment to the Architectural Review Board. Elizabeth Wallace has completed the term and is eligible and interested in being reappointed to a second term that would expire June 30th, 2026.
Wonderful. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. I'm looking.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item 10.04, Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, this item is a recommendation to appoint Richard Derobbe to a seat on the Municipal Code Enforcement Board. It would be a first term expiring May 31st of 2026, at which time he would be eligible for reappointment if you so chose.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. I missed a second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Mr. Clerk, do we have any other appointments to come before the board?
No, sir.
We have no introduction of ordinances tonight, colleagues. We're on policy formation in direction, 12.01, Clean Energy Plan. All right. Mr. Gold?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me, let me say it's my, it's my pleasure and a privilege to introduce this item. This is, this is the result of a lot of community engagement, a lot of effort by many of the people that you see in the room, that you may hear from tonight. And, you know, it really is a milestone that I think we will all remember and celebrate for many, many years. It is a clean energy plan that follows your resolution, your 2019 resolution, to guide us into a clean energy future. We've said for many, many years that we are the leaders in our sector in public power as well as in the private sector in terms of leading, leading really our peers. I think this is another indication of that, and I think it charts a course for a clean energy future that is complex, but one that we are intending to achieve and are determined to achieve. So with that, let me recognize someone who's really been at the tip of the spear, Michael Olson, our Clean Energy Plan Manager. He's gonna give the presentation. I think everybody in the room knows who Michael is because he's gone to all their houses and their community events and pretty much anywhere else that there might be something green that's being discussed. He's done a great job, and he's gonna give the presentation. Before you do, Michael, let me also recognize Tony Ginn. I just want to acknowledge, Tony, our general manager of our Electric and Gas Department, we're very proud of the work they do, and again, it's our pleasure to present this to you tonight for your approval. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Certainly, it's a time to celebrate and reflecting on earlier presentation in hindsight. I should have prepared my comments in the form of a poem. I'm prepared to do that, but I do understand that at least one of the public speakers tonight is planning to present their comments in a form of song. And so, don't want to take too much time between now and then, but I did want to start with a sincere thank you. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, for your vision, your leadership, your patience in this multi-year planning process. It is my great privilege to be the one who gets to stand before you to deliver the Clean Energy Plan, but as City Manager mentioned, it has certainly been a collaborative effort. And if I had the time, I'd turn and recognize all those that have been fortunate enough to join us here this afternoon, individuals, stakeholders from the community, public officials, our executive team, fellow staff, and colleagues who have put a lot of work behind this. But with a packed agenda this afternoon, I'll just say thank you collectively to the group that know who they are and some are recognized through this plan. So what is it that we're celebrating? Just wanted to take a few moments, just kind of bring you up to speed where we're at and what this or how rather this plan is organized. So the assignment, as we understood it, was develop a plan from the resolution grounded in technical studies and shaped with broad input from the community. Earlier this year, we finished the core of those studies in the form of an Energy Integrated Resource Plan. Our consultant looked at various pathways to clean energy future to 2035, 2050. They examined the technical, operational, economic impacts of those different pathways. And from that study, they had a number of recommendations that became the basis for the interim targets and steps that you see codified here in the plan. Bringing the community and other stakeholders into the process generated, gosh, more than 100 or so ideas about how we do this, where we go. Through the process of deliberation, collaboration, we synthesize it as best we can down to seven broad policy bundles that are supported by over 85 different action items. And want to point out that as you read through the plan, you know, the intent of those action items, they were designed to be a bit of a focusing tool. Where do we go now? Not to pick the winners or losers, but to be inclusive, but provide a basis to hold us accountable and lead us forward. So I don't have the time this afternoon to walk you through all of those, but I did want to take just a couple more moments, give you sort of a general lay of how this was all organized. So I mentioned it boils down to seven sort of policy bundles. Those bundles are further fall into three categories: renewable energy, energy efficiency and conservation, and transportation goals. In this first bucket, renewable energy, our studies and feedback from the community largely focus on solar as our prime renewable energy source, solar coupled with energy storage. That first goal looks at expanding our utility scale solar footprint two, maybe three times over the next five to seven years. Goal two looks to expand rooftop solar and community-related solar, what we as a city can do to enable that to, in addition, reduce barriers to adoption. And on that front, I did want to do a quick shout-out to the U.S. Department of Energy. They provided both technical assistance and financial support through their National Renewable Energy Laboratory, a program called the Solar Energy Innovation Network, to help us identify barriers to solar adoption in our low-modern-income homes and neighborhoods. And we're currently working pilots in the Bond, Griffin Heights, and Frenchtown neighborhoods. The second category I mentioned was our energy efficiency and conservation goals. We have three policies in this space. The first is interesting. It looks at further reducing the city's sort of operational footprint. And as you all know, all city operations are powered by our solar farms, so we're green energy. By reducing our footprint, that allows us to extend more solar into the community. Similarly, goal five seeks to enable deeper energy efficiency retrofits in our community, adoption of smart home and smart building controls so that our customers have better control of their utilities, reduce your utility bills, et cetera. Then finally, goal number five is sort of futures thinking. As we, as a community, as Tallahassee grows, how does that development align with our clean energy objectives and plans? Finally, the last category is our clean transportation goals. The first one, goal six, kind of echoes the commitment you all made through the resolution, and that is to see the transition of our city light-duty vehicle fleets and our metro service to all-electric. Recently, as I believe you all are aware, Star Metro received a boost through funding from the federal government in, to essentially enable the purchase of eight more electric vehicles in addition to building out a charging depot for the growing electric bus fleet, and finally, for construction of the South Side Transit Center, which provides accessibility equity in the clean energy space there. Finally, goal seven looks, again, similar to the other buckets, to extend what can city staff do to enable adoption of clean, or clean transportation options in our community, whether that's building on our power TLH fleet of electric vehicle chargers, or promoting, reinforcing other multimodal transportation options. So again, certainly a time to celebrate. I'm looking forward to hearing some of the public comment, receive additional guidance discussion from you all. We are at a milestone as we pivot from largely focused on planning to this next stage of accelerated implementation. Certainly looking forward to it. Thank you for your leadership and continued support, and I'll be here to answer.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great.
All right. Mr. Clerk, public comment, please. How many speakers do we have?
We have one. We have seven in person, and I believe we have one virtual.
All right. Let's begin.
All right. Our first speaker is John Hedrick, and the next speaker will be Deb Swim.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please. Three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. John Hedrick, 1551 Cristobal Drive, right here in Tallahassee. I speak to you as the original co-founder of Tally35, helped start this all in motion. Progress toward the plan, we now have some five to six years after we started. You need to adopt the plan that's in front of you, but we also then need to immediately turn and implement it and update it as rapidly as possible. There are reasons for why we need to do that. Among them, record temperatures and heat indexes both here and around the country and world that we're all experiencing. The increasing melting of the polar ice caps and glaciers around the world, extraordinary fires out west in Canada and Europe, among other locations. First tropical storm hit California in 80-plus years. Earlier this week, five different tropical systems in the Atlantic heading somewhere near our directions. About 100-degree temperatures in the Gulf of Mexico and the tremendous destruction of the coral reefs. And remember, we just missed the worst of Hurricane Andrew, just Anthony Michael, just a few years ago. What must we do more now and/or possibly relatively soon? One thing you could do right away is hire an energy manager. It's been done in Atlanta and Tampa, which in general, which would achieve faster your policy goals and would, in the energy savings, would more than pay for this position. You need to think about moving your goalpost backwards toward 2035 or sooner. You're already doing this with your transportation sectors, Star Metro, and all your vehicles, fleets, for example. Need to ultimately phase out and remove natural gas incentives on the way to getting rid of natural gas. We need to aim to reduce electricity usage both in the city and in the community, something more like 15% as a target instead of just the 5%. Likewise, we need to have a higher rate of EVs being sold in the community. We're glad we're going to see this progress, and you're looking at it at least once a year.
You have about 20 seconds.
Okay. Will this solve all the problems? No, but we can act as a leader for the rest of the community, for the rest of the nation and the world. So adopt this plan today. Our planet will thank you, and your and our lives may very well depend on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Thanks. Deb Swim, followed by Kim Buchanan.
Great.
Hi, Commissioner. I'm here to, oh, I live at 1323 Diamond Street. I'm here today in two capacities. First, as a clean energy attorney, and I want to state strong support for the Clean Energy Plan that's before you today. It's a very important first step toward your goal to transition to 100% clean energy by 2050. I especially support the very specific parts of the plan, such as setting a percentage goal for how much solar we're going to aim for, both utility solar and rooftop solar for energy efficiency of buildings. I like that we've added not only electric vehicles but multimodal transit to the transportation goals. Implementation of the set of policy directions in the plan is going to be, create opportunities for us to take advantage of the rapidly emerging clean energy technologies, and this is going to lay important groundwork for our transition to clean energy. So I urge you to pass this item, please, and to support this implementation to deliver the most rapid, the most rapid transition to clean and affordable energy future for all of Tallahassee's residents and businesses. And I guess I just also wanted to add that I really appreciate the climate justice aspects that have been included in the plan for our low-income communities to make sure that they can share equitably in the benefits of the transition. That's the one thing I came to talk about. The other thing I'm here to talk about is, as one of the co-founders of a new local organization called Tally Greensing, we're a faith and community-based group with a mission to sing the earth into well-being. And soon, Reverend Kim Buchanan, the pastor of my church, United Church in Tallahassee, will lead us in a song to support and celebrate the transition to clean energy and climate justice issues that are here today. We did have a sing-along down out in front of City Hall earlier today, and despite the shade of the live oaks and the wind from our electric fans, we felt the very extreme heat, and it was kind of ironic to think about how we're connecting between the hot day and the transition to clean energy. But it was a wonderful, fun, heartwarming event, and we're gonna have more, and we invite you to come. And last, I just wanted to say that Tallahassee Greensing has a musical surprise that will appear sometime during the public comment period, and so please stay tuned, and thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Kim Buchanan. I feel like I should, ladies and gentlemen, introducing.
Coming to the stage.
Followed by Lonnie Draper.
Kim Buchanan, 2608 Block Drive, representing Tally Greensing. Turning tally greener, our city has a plan. Turning tally greener, tell everyone you can. Turning tally greener, really won't be that hard. Turning tally greener, lets everyone do our part. Clean renewable energy for?
City and our city!
Let the sun shine, let the sun shine. Let the sun shine, let the sun shine on solar panels for all. Solar panels for all. Solar panels for everyone. Energy efficiency and conservation for?
City and community.
Gonna keep all those fossil fuels in the ground where they belong. In the ground where they belong. In the ground where they belong. Gonna keep all those fossil fuels in the ground where they belong. In the ground where they belong. All right, here's the next one. I made up a word. We ain't gonna carbonize no more. Ain't gonna carbonize no more. Ain't gonna carbonize no more, no more. Ain't gonna carbonize no more. Ain't gonna carbonize no more. Ain't gonna carbanize no more. Cleaner transportation for?
City and community.
The engine on the bus does not pollute, not pollute, not pollute. These engine on the bus does not pollute all through the town. Turning tally greener, our city has a plan. Turning tally greener, tell everyone you can. Turning tally greener, really won't be that hard. Turning tally greener, lets everyone do our part. Okay, almost done. We have one more thing to say. We want to say it loud. Of our city commissioners, we are very proud. Thank you, commissioners, for committing to this plan. As your fellow citizens, we'll do everything we can to turn tally greener. Our city has a plan. Turning tally greener, tell everyone you can. Turning tally greener, really won't be that hard. Turning tally greener, lets everyone do our, everyone do our, everyone do our part.
All right. Reverend, I was a little skeptical when I first heard y'all were going to come sing. That was fantastic. That was great. What a Renaissance meeting. We've been praised in the spoken word, praised by song. Let's just end the meeting right.
We need to dance. Now we need to dance.
Let's quit while we're ahead.
That was real nice.
When is the release of, the release of your EP?
That was real nice. Yeah. Our next speaker, please, Mr. Clerk.
Our next speaker is Lonnie Draper. Lonnie Draper followed by Maisha Mitchell.
All right. I was about to say, I didn't know how Lonnie was going to top that.
Maisha Mitchell, then, is our next speaker.
Okay. Next speaker.
Kim Ross.
All right, Kim.
Do I have to follow up?
Thanks for joining us. Name and address for the record, please.
Kim Ross, 1203 Buckingham Drive. Thanks for having me. I am here representing the Tally 100 Together Coalition, which consists of over sixty organizations and businesses, and we support the clean energy plan and want to see it passed today so that we can begin implementation rapidly. And I'd just like to ask, because I know I was a little shy to stand up when they were singing, so if you support the passage of the clean energy plan today, please stand or wave your hand to let everybody know you do it. All right, and for all of you all, there's cake in the.
Brink cake.
Those of you who didn't stand, you know, you can come see if there's any left. So, a lot of people have already said the things that I have in my notes here. We've had nine extreme heat advisories, at least, with high heat indices of over a hundred and fifteen. This has a huge negative impact on everyone, but especially our most vulnerable residents, including those that have a high energy burden and those that are unhoused. And hurricane season being upon us, it's not a matter of if, but when something like Hurricane Michael comes and varies a little bit more east. And so time is of the essence, and we really appreciate all the work that's happened today. The Tally 100 Committees, several of the Tally 100 Committees and the SEED Project that Michael mentioned earlier have interacted regularly with utility staff. They've made every effort to sit down and discuss our ideas and theirs and have been right there. Well, not all the details are ironed out. We fully support this plan and are ready to move into implementation. Only by beginning the implementation process will obstacles be recognized and overcome. And we encourage an aggressive approach. We encourage conversation and commitment and cooperation with the county, and we encourage seeing what happens in the next year and getting reports back on an annual basis. And we will stay involved to help make the city a clean leader in the cost-effective adaptation of clean energy. And now to try and incorporate some of Maisha's comments, she also wanted to point out that we're also going to stay involved in trying to find other funding opportunities. The federal government has a lot of funding right now that's coming through, and it's coming through in particular via Justice 40 Initiative, which means every agency, as they put out their funding, has to consider that at least forty percent of that funding goes into our lower-income communities, our communities of color, and making sure that those that are most disadvantaged, overburdened by pollution, and marginalized are seeing that funding coming through. So I know Maisha and I work closely together on those items, and we would love to see that happen as we, and it has happened thus far in the development of this plan, that the city sitting beside us in the SEED Project and other things has really happened, but we want to keep seeing that happen and keep working with the city to make that happen. And we're in partnership, not only here in the city of Tallahassee, but we are in cooperation with organizations across the southeast. There's eight states. Thank you. And six tribal nations that are part of this EPA Region Four.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ross. Currently appreciate it.
Oh, I thought you said twenty seconds. Sorry. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Howard Kessler, and that's the last speaker in chambers. We have one, as I said, that we'll go to next virtually.
Thank you for joining us.
An honor. It's Howard Kessler, 408 Plantation Road. So I want to start by saying thank you very much for the plan that you brought forward. It's a good plan, and I don't have any kickers as I go along talking that's going to take that away. I stand by that. You start the plan, and it took a bit of time to get to this point, and we're all urging you to act as quickly as possible. Because at the time you started, to the time we are now, we all see what's happening to our environment, and it's very critical that we move as quickly as we can. So that's my ask of you this evening. And the one small thing I would like you to at least consider and look, take a hard look at, because it's difficult for me to understand while we are talking green and moving green in that direction, that we still are promoting fossil fuels in the form of natural gas. So I would urge you to take a hard look at that and see how we can. It just looks bad, and it is bad. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Stephen Martin.
Mr. Martin, are you still with us?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Wonderful. Name and address for the record, please.
Stephen Martin, 2625 Stonegate Drive. Dr. Kessler just mentioned some mixed messaging with promoting natural gas and, yeah, mixed messaging. Boy, have I experienced quite a bit of that over the last two decades since I've been keeping up with local policy, city and county. And if I'm not mistaken, solar farm, one of them that Mr. Olson was talking about, I heard that that solar farm, part of it is on what had been forested land before. Cutting down forested area to put a solar farm somewhere really sends a mixed message. So I'm not quite as inclined to think it's time to celebrate right now as Mr. Olson and all the others there think. Yeah, I can't argue. This has been a sincere effort that's needed, but far more than this is needed. I spoke earlier about this push for population growth, economic development as a means to happiness and a better state of existence. Fifty-plus years ago, we were more concerned about overpopulation and overconsumption than we are today, as well as species extinction. What's changed in the last fifty years? Oh, the Green Revolution and the idea that we can conquer this by sustainable technology. Yeah, we can rely on human ingenuity, the same ingenuity that got us into this mess to begin with. Well, right now, let's see. The last month was the hottest month on record. There's also more sustainable technology than ever before. That doesn't logically follow. What does logically follow, though, is there's more people and higher per capita consumption than ever before. So if we want to get serious about this, and I'm talking to the commissioners, I'm talking to all the activists there, we need to pay far more attention to population growth and what's going on in this community with this push, and I mean serious push, for economic development. Developers have been rewarded. I mentioned before, thirteen hundred acres that are going to be turned over to development. What they've been rewarded has cost the rest of us dearly. Their rewards are short-term, our costs are long-term. So again, I don't mean to be a party poop. Part of the reason I did not come there today is I didn't want to spoil everybody else's party. But I'm going to end this coming from a different direction than everybody else seems to be. We need to stop doing so much that we've been doing for so long before it's too late if it isn't already. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, that's the last speaker we have on the item.
Let's open it up for discussion. I support the plan.
And let's move with. We've been told that we need to hurry up, adopt and implement, and let's get going. So let's go.
Second. Sounds good. If it's the will of the board, because this is a special one, why don't we have the mayor pro tem with the motion and without objection, a unanimous second?
Yes.
Without objection, that's great. Commissioner Matlow with the comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, I mean, I'll just start by saying, I think this is city government at its best. You know, this is an idea brought to us by the community, gathering people from all walks of life to really do something better for our city, came to our elected officials and received unanimous support to move forward with a clean energy plan. And we've seen the work, Tony, Michael, David, that you guys poured in to producing this. It's incredible, because we all bear a great responsibility, not just as city leaders, but what votes we take and how that impacts both our planet as well as our local environment. So congratulations to everybody who was involved in spearheading this, all the work that went into it. You have my gratitude. I think this agenda item came out, and the temperature outside wanted to make sure it got passed, so every day it let us know how important it was to vote for this. I did a couple questions on it. When we talk about the implementation, Mr. City Manager, will we get an annual review or when will we get check-ins to see what targets we're hitting?
Mr. Manager.
Commissioner, I think, thank you for the question. I think you'll get both. Certainly an annual update, but I don't think it'll be limited to that. As you and all the commissioners know, we're entering our fifth year of our strategic plan, and I would fully expect the principles in this plan to be integrated in that as well. So that makes it more of a living continuous update as well, not limited to an annual update.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. There's a lot of great implementations in here. There's also a lot of great examine and consider, and as we get that information, I would love to see it so we can show the public and us, frankly, you know, what we've been working on. And then, I had one more thought on that. On the natural gas component, I know this is probably one of the most contentious parts of where we're at and what people are pushing for, is how do we scale back the use of natural gas? And then if we are scaling back the use of our direct natural gas, how are we replacing that with true renewable energy? And I know you have the answer to that right now. I'm just kidding, Mr. Manager. But I understand these things are difficult, but I think it is part of the long-term conversation of the message we're sending, how quickly we can scale back the rebates on natural gas, how quickly we can expand the rebates on solar and other electrical appliances. And I know you guys understand those concerns and are working hard on them, and we appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. I've got Commissioner Richardson, I've got Commissioner Williams-Cox, and Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to say how proud I am of what this city has done. The city of Tallahassee, our staff, the volunteers who have been involved in this. Certainly, this puts us at the forefront, I would have to think, of communities throughout the state and probably this nation in what we're doing to address climate change. We are seeing extreme examples of what we have done to our climate, not only in the state of Florida, but across this nation. Hurricanes, floods, earthquakes, you name it. We're feeling the heat here even today. We were outside with the Tally Green Sing, and I had the crazy enough idea to go out in this suit, and they almost had to drag me back into City Hall. But this certainly puts us at the forefront, I believe, and we will be an example, a model community for others to emulate in terms of what we are doing progressively and rapidly, as I hope, to address climate issues in our community. The one thing that I am extremely proud of as well is the focus on giving those who are not financially able to afford solar and other types of revisions or modifications to their homes, particularly those in underserved neighborhoods. I live on the south side of town, and I can tell you, many of my neighbors would not be able to afford solar panels or other retrofit without some type of financial assistance from city, state, or the federal government. So I'm so glad that that is being addressed in this as well. And one of the things that I mentioned to Ms. Ross when she and I met the other day was, and Steve mentioned this probably to a greater degree than I am, but when my wife and I looked into getting solar panels for our house, we have two trees that sit right next to each other, adjacent to the house. One is an oak, and one is a pine tree. And the guy who gave us an estimate on the solar panels said that, well, Mr. Richardson, if you're going to get the solar panels, you're going to have to cut down one of the trees. And my wife and I made a decision that we were not going to cut down our tree, and apparently I'm hearing that that was a good decision from what Kim told me and environmentalists are saying. We don't want to cut down the trees just to put solar panels. There are other options. And so, Kim, thank you for bringing that to my attention as well. So I'm proud of what we've done as a community. I'm proud of what we've done as a city government, city commission and staff, and just looking forward to moving forward and making this happen as soon as we possibly can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure thing. Mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Kim Ross, and early in my first term, Kim and, Kim, I don't know who all was with you, but you all came to my office. And I also want to thank the city manager, because he took it on as a personal project, and you all went back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. I don't know how many times y'all went back and forth until you had a resolution put together that you could really, you know, sink your teeth into. And the night that we adopted it, I believe, I don't, maybe y'all remember, we were like only one, we were a very small number of cities who had done this, I think it was. And so I agree with Commissioner Richardson that we are on the forefront. In case jeopardy calls, there are four hundred and eleven cities, towns, and villages in the state of Florida. And so to be on the forefront of this, having an example for them to follow, is awesome. I was at the League of Cities Conference just recently, and Thomas Whitley had the opportunity to give a presentation about what Tallahassee is doing to make it a livable city. I wasn't even in the presentation, but I had people from other cities hunting me down to tell me what a great job we're doing here in Tallahassee. And that's because the public, the community... And that's because the public, the community, those who know what and why and where and when and how, working with our professional staff, you all are making this happen. And I'm just plum proud and pleased to be a part of it and look forward to, like you said, John, let's get it started. Let's go do it. But we also, as Commissioner Richardson said, we've got to make sure for those who can't go as fast as some of us can go, we got to make sure we provide an un-ramp for them to be able to get on at some point. We can't just pull the rug out. So patience, is that what, what was it with Kung Fu, patience? We got to have patience, and we got to go together, and some go first and then reach back for others. But we've got to go, eventually, we're going to all get there together. So thank you, Kim. I don't remember who all the people were in my office initially on that day, but it got started then, and I'm glad to see that it's continuing. And thank you, Reese, for your leadership with your staff, your team. And then everybody's gotten on. Star Metro and others, you know, getting these grants and the electric buses and all of this, all of this stuff is all a part of making it work for the whole team and making sure that our buildings are being powered by clean energy. All of that took commitment, political will, and people who know how to do it right there on the front row, people who have that institutional knowledge before AI takes over, how to get this done. So thank you all so very much, every one of you who played a part in making this day happen. And I'll say to Mr. Martin, we're not going to let you rain on this parade, but we want you to come along with us. And hopefully, we'll all get there together. Thank you.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to congratulate you, Michael, and Tony, and all the activists who have made this happen over the years. It truly has been a lot of fun to see the progress that we've made together and the improvements that we've made. And I look forward to seeing the implementation continue. And specifically, I wanted to make the point that I hope that as we are working on revisions to our comprehensive plan, to our land use and mobility elements, that we incorporate this, that we're working together with these goals. Because we know that no matter what we do with our energy or even with electric vehicles, cars, I mean, are just the worst for our environment. And we have an opportunity to make Tallahassee a place where people can walk, where people should be able to not own a car and be able to work, visit their family, go to dinner. And that is part of this plan, and I'm so happy to see it in Goal Seven as a part. But we need the development pattern and the comprehensive plan to support that so that we can maximize that impact. So I want to make sure that we, I'm so happy to see this, to see how we are going to incorporate it in the future in other plans as well. So thank you very much and congratulations.
Wonderful. There's a motion on the table made by the mayor pro tem, unanimous second. All those in favor, second, five, I say an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass.
Aye, aye.
Still singing, huh?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We're on item number 12.02, Mr. Manager. Colleagues, let me tell you, I know. My goal is for us to get through the next agenda item and then take a break. I think we're going to have a pretty good public hearing tonight, so I think everybody needs to stretch their legs a little bit. So let's go ahead and take up item number 12.02. We can take care of 12.03. Folks, if everybody wouldn't mind quietly exiting because we're going to continue on with the meeting. Folks, we'll do 12.03, 04, and 05 after the public hearing later on this evening, okay? 12.02. Jim Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. At the June 14th City Commission meeting, you asked for an agenda item to come back to you that discusses the charter review committee process. The item attempts to provide the information that you requested. I won't read all of it, but just a couple of points that are in the item. I think each of these is in the item. Charter changes can be brought to a referendum by city commission action or by citizen petition. There's not a requirement for a charter review, but it has been 14 years since the last charter review committee met for the city of Tallahassee. In the interim, there have been some changes made that don't require a referendum. The example used is adding some gender-neutral language that did not exist previously. If you want to have a charter review committee look at the city charter, you'll need to address makeup of the committee. We would need to establish bylaws governing their actions and determine a timeline. Toward the point of a timeline, the agenda item lays out a timeline that concludes with an item for the November 2024 ballot. Just want to point out that that timeline provides just 90 days for a committee to meet. So I think it really only works in the case of a, you know, a narrow or well-defined scope. And as an example, the 2009 Charter Review Committee met for 90 days. They had nine meetings in that 90 days. They had some other items that they may have discussed, but the charge from the commission at that time was to review duties of the mayor and city commission. So a well-defined charge that they could accomplish in 90 days. The item doesn't require specific action, but it will follow whatever direction you'd like to give us.
Wonderful. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem, you brought this item up.
Thank you, and thank you, Jim, for laying out the process. And you gave me just what I asked for, and my colleagues agreed. Thank you all for your support to find out what we need to do. And I see Mr. Brown in the audience. Mr. Brown has come to us a few times and said that we're operating on a charter that hadn't been modified since the 1800s. So I wanted to make sure that we took a look at that. And of course, you see when the charter has been modified many times since then. But I believe it's time for us to take a look at it. As we approach our 200th year, it's time for us to, and we haven't looked at the charter and made considerable changes in a number of years. I'm thinking that, and I hope you support this, that we do take the opportunity to look at our charter and help it to evolve into modern time of where we are, where we find ourselves at this point in time. And I am not opposed to the way it's been done in the past through a charter committee review, a review committee. But I also know that we would be limited on the number of people we would want to place on a committee. And I would like to hear from the public in a fashion, survey style or what have you, that everyone would have an opportunity to provide some input to the commission and the committee so that we can at least see where the public is thinking and what they're thinking needs to happen as we move forward. I think it's been, what, 14 years?
Yes, ma'am.
14 years, you know. Commissioner Richardson, you had an afro 14 years ago, right? So a lot of things have changed in 14 years.
You're right.
So it might be time for us to, Pastor Ferguson, why are you laughing? You probably had one too. So it's probably time, I think it's time for us to take a look at our charter. And let's set the course for the next commission, not just us, but the future as we take a look at the charter.
Is that a motion?
I can make a motion. I didn't know if anyone else wanted to discuss anything, but I do. I will make a motion that we move forward with the charter review process.
I will say on that motion. Other comments? Commissioner Richardson.
No, I support the motion, and we'll, of course, support it because I think it is something important for us to do. My only reservation is that timeline. And it depends on, I guess, how broadly we want to charge the committee with looking at our charter. If it's limited, as the treasurer clerk has talked about, I think that timeline could work. But if it's going to be a much broader and comprehensive review, I just can't imagine that happening in 90 days. So that would be my only reservation.
Sure. Commissioner Porter.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. A point of clarification, so is the motion to adopt that timeline?
The motion is to adopt this process.
You need more clarity, right?
Right, yeah, I would need more clarity. The agenda item provides a timeline, but it doesn't ask for any specific recommendations. So you could adopt that timeline, any other timeline.
Right.
We're going to take whatever direction you give us, so we would need clarity on that piece.
Yeah, that's a good point, Commissioner Porter. Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
The motion on the table is to formally move forward, okay? And I think we should begin this process immediately. What has been presented by staff that I am assuming is part of your motion is a 10-member commission. Everybody gets two appointments, okay? So obviously, in the near future, we'll have to formally make those appointments. I envision another agenda item coming back with specific bylaws, guiding documents for the commission.
Certainly.
I would encourage each one of us, when we talk to Jim Cook, allow him to get the laundry list and incorporate so that we can finalize that guiding document at the next meeting when we make the appointments. I mean, that's just a recommendation.
I'm good with that.
Commissioner Porter, you actually still have the floor.
Thank you, thank you. And for that clarification, because I agree with Commissioner Richardson or just personally, this timeline seems, I mean, if we're really, if the goal is to kind of open it up without a very specific, you know, recommendation in mind, this seems like an irresponsible timeline. And I know it was only an example of sort of if we were to move as quickly as possible. So I wouldn't be comfortable with this timeline, but I'm comfortable with moving forward. I was wondering. I was wondering if, I mean, can we talk a little bit about what we have in mind for this? You know, I mean, we've all read the charter. There have, it's not that I don't think there are things that we could or should change, but I don't see it as a totally antiquated document.
Right.
You know, and so I'm wondering what we have in mind, if there's a goal here, if we can actually talk about that. Because I'd love to have this discussion before we move forward because I think that could change what the timeline looks like and how we move forward.
Sure. I'll tell you my ideas. I am very comfortable with the formal government of council management. I'm very comfortable with the directly elected ceremonial mayor, not just because I am serving in that position, but for future commissions as well. I am interested in hearing a conversation formally by a charter review commission on whether it's time to expand the city commission from a five-person elected body to a seven-person elected body. And if we go that route, is it seven all at large? Do you do a mixture of district seats and at-large seats? I don't know, but I think it's time to have that conversation. Out of 411 municipalities, we are in the top 10 population-wise. We have a population of 200,000. Is it time to expand the city commission? There are many communities that are much smaller than us that have larger elected bodies. There are communities that have district seats. Our very Leon County Commission has five district seats and two at-large positions. I'm not saying I will agree or disagree, but I'm saying that I think it's time for us to have the formal conversation on the size of the commission. But I'm not interested necessarily in having a conversation on the form of government. I do think council management serves us well. I don't think that our community would be served well with a strong mayor form of government, quite frankly. Nor do I think we should take a step back and go to the rotating mayor. I think we're large enough to keep the form of government with a directly elected ceremonial mayor and not only look at whether we expand the size or not, but just also do a check, make sure that the election process is in line with what we want to do in this community. We used to have spring elections, now we have fall elections. We have certain terms on primary elections versus general election, and I think it's fair to check in on that. Finally, I agree with you. I'm not terribly bothered by, say, like, the language of the description of the city manager or the city attorney. However, we should probably just make sure that it's up to 21st century standards and it doesn't have outdated language. So to answer your question, those are my particular thoughts.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson.
And those were my thoughts as well. What gave me pause was the issue of not necessarily expanding the size of the commission. I think that would be an appropriate thing to look at, but this issue of districts. You know, the county went to districts for a very specific reason.
That's right.
And that was because African-Americans were not represented or were not able to have representation on that body. And I want to thank the late Anita Davis for her efforts in making that happen. That's how I was eventually elected to the Leon County School Board because of her efforts. So that is the issue that gives me pause.
Sure.
And if we were to look at that, how would it work for the city of Tallahassee? Is it necessary? I mean, look at our makeup now. 20% of this body is African-American. And so if, and so I don't, that is the kind of issue that you can't rush. And so that's what gave me pause in terms of the timeline that was recommended, even if we look at that issue.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Purposefully have not voiced publicly what I would like to see because I don't want to stymie what the public is thinking or what they may be interested in us looking at. I want to hear what they have to say so that I can fully represent them and represent the public in this review. And so that's why I mentioned a potential survey or some sort as we, even between now and the next meeting, having some type of survey, as well as I've asked our city attorney to develop something that we can teach the public about the charter because there are many who don't know, one, that we have ruled our charter, two, what's in it, three, what is our style of government right now so that he can make a decision, or those kinds of things. I want to make sure that the opportunity to educate and hear from is included in this process. So we can develop a different timeline, but while that is occurring, I want to begin to receive information from folks. A short survey, Mr. City Manager, City Attorney, or Mr. Cook, that will allow people quickly online to tell us what you want to see happen in the charter, not in the entire city, because there are a lot of things that we might want to have done differently in the city that's not even in the charter. But just in the charter, what kinds of things would you like to see different? That doesn't mean that it will happen, but it will mean that you provided input. Whether you were on the committee or not, you were able to provide input. Because if we go with a 10-person committee, which I believe is what we're recommending, we may not get everybody's opinion. So I want that opportunity to hear from everybody that want to respond. Some of that information I get in the grocery store, because people stop me in the grocery store, doctors, I'll take it wherever I can get it because I do want to know so that when I'm representing you to the best of my ability.
Excellent. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. A clarifying question for Mr. Cook. Those committee meetings, aren't they open to the public? Right, and the public can participate, correct?
That's correct. We would put that in the bylaws, but effectively, that would serve like our other committees where the city commission has established a committee whether standing or for a single purpose, and they're going to provide information to you for decisions. So we would provide opportunity for public input.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the thorough agenda item, Mr. Cook. I agree with Commissioner Richardson on the timeline. I do think it's important to get it done right, more than it is to get it done quickly. And if we're going to open it up to public participation and recommendations, those things take time to get out to the public, then it takes additional time for the board to review. And I know on the timeline presented by the treasurer clerk, the targeted scope, I mean, it's basically in a few weeks, we would be giving a very limited scope. And to me, that's moving too fast. This is the first public conversation we've had about opening up the charter. Some of the other things I do think can happen in tandem if we start working on the bylaws and the committee structure. I think you made some good recommendations just based on how it's been done previously. But I do think we should give at least two months for people to come up with ideas and then a few months for them to be reviewed. So I mean, this thing has been, feels like beating a dead horse by the time it comes to a vote. to a vote, and nobody can say it moved too quickly, which we hear so often. So I'm not opposed to the 10-member board the mayor mentioned or the bylaws. I just think it's going to be a tremendous lift to try to rush, to get this done and get something on the ballot by 2024. And I don't know if that serves any purpose other than taking the step back and saying, you know, we checked every box, we looked at everything, we want a review. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And on point, Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Commissioner Richardson.
We also need, we'll need to have time to educate the public. That's going to be the biggest thing. And so, yeah, I mean, there's just so many reasons why we need to get it right, as you mentioned, Mr. Matlow, rather than getting it done quickly.
Of course.
And Mr. Mayor, I understand that, but I don't hear a suggestion of a timeline, because we need to say to Mr. Cook, you know, what is it that we want? If we are saying that we don't have enough time to get it on the ballot in 2024, if we started, let's see, it's August now, we start September, October, we're saying that we don't have, there's not enough time to get it on the ballot November 2024, then what is the target? We need to, I think we need to give him something to work with so that he can help us develop a timeline.
I do think that we will be able to make the ballot. I actually think that this timeline works. We might be able to adjust it, put a little bit more time in for the committee to meet. But I do think that this timeline works. I have been through a charter review before as a county commissioner, but it's the exact same process that is being proposed, and I think we will be successful. Heaven forbid the committee needs more time, we'll give them more time. If we begin this process and it's not going to make the 24 ballot, okay, then we'll look at a future ballot. But I'm ready to begin the process. I support your motion, and I do think that we'll be able to make the ballot.
And if I may say on point, if we are successful in making the ballot, perhaps this will help voter turnout, because that, November is the election, and perhaps this will get people interested in coming to vote.
And keep in mind, it does not, it really doesn't impact this board right now.
Right.
I mean, if something was to pass in 2024, okay, and say a commission was expanded to a seven-person commission, those elections wouldn't take place until 2026, not 2024, unless we decided to have like a special election. So, I mean, for it to actually take place, you're thinking way in the future, you know, four years in the future, that will impact, you know, the commission at that point, not immediately.
Question.
Sure.
Mayor, you talked about increasing the size of the commission, which I would be okay with. But I guess, again, the concern that I have, and I guess this would be part of the discussion.
Correct.
Is do we continue with at-large elections or districts? And I'm real concerned about that district issue. And that would, you know, that's going to have to be a discussion that this entire community has.
Of course.
And that one can't be rushed.
Correct.
I mean, you know, too much went into getting us to where we are with the school board and county commission. And I want to get it right rather than doing it quickly on that issue.
Absolutely. But you're absolutely correct. And I, you know, I don't know if I will agree or disagree as a voting member of this body when the formal recommendations come back, but I think it's time to have that formal conversation through a charter review process. So the motion on the table is to move forward at the next meeting. Mr. Cook, bring back an agenda item with the bylaws detailing how we are moving forward, and we should be prepared for appointments to a charter review commission. Did I say that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, just following up on my previous comments, unless we're only giving that one issue as a targeted scope in September, we need more time. I mean, we're asking to already have appointees in place by November. I mean, that's assuming we know people who are interested in doing it. We don't even have really time to put out 30 days to say, hey, who wants to serve on this committee and thoroughly vet who we're putting on it. So my recommendation would be to add probably 90 days where we can take that public feedback for ideas, have at least 30 days to 60 days to put out an application window for the board, and then just push everything back accordingly, 90 days.
Mayor Protem, as the maker of the motion.
You know, we make appointments to boards all the time, and we do have an application process already in place. And when I looked at the minutes from the way it was done before, there was not a built-in three-month window to make appointments. I mean, you know, people are already talking.
Right.
People are already, you know, so we already know that there are folks who are interested. It's just a matter of us as individual commissioners deciding who those two lucky people will be. And I say that because they didn't become targets as well. So, you know, because people will be approaching them as well. So I just don't see the need to wait 90 days to make appointments. Our next commission meeting is...
September 13th.
September 13th. Okay. I think that at that next meeting, we, you're going to, we'll be working with you, of course, and you'll be, you know, providing us with the information that we need, you'll be asking questions. I'm sure we'll be working very close with you and the city attorney to make sure that we dot every i across every t. I just don't see why we have to wait 90 days to do that. Because then that too bends the timeline even more, because the longer it takes you to get started, the longer it's going to take you to get finished. And if we need to build time in along the way, that's okay, but let's get it started.
I agree. I think it's time to start.
On point, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, no, and I'm not saying let's not get started. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, you know, let's start in September, but let's, instead of city commission develop the targeted scope, which is us, let's add a 30-day period there to take public feedback. Mayor Protem, you mentioned an online forum that people could submit ideas to. Let's give the public 30 days to do that. In tandem, the bylaws, all of those things that I think are September and October on the scope can still be accomplished. And then let's give another 30-day window. Once we know we have bylaws and we know what the committee is, then we can open up, the public won't even know what they're volunteering for until we have bylaws in place and a committee structure. Once we have a committee structure, let's give 30 days for people to apply and us to interview candidates and make our appointment. So it might only be a 60 additional days, but then if it's going, the scope is going to be increased by more than one item, and they're going to look at a longer list, making sure they have ample time to review it as they see fit. So my hope would be a friendly amendment that we could add that timeframe in the beginning, but I think it's important.
Okay.
Mayor Protem.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say this, and I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Matlow, but I'm going to say this. I don't think, for me to select two people, I don't need an application process. If I'm going to appoint a couple of folks, you know, I think I can do that without them having to apply to do, for me to interview them, interview 30 people to choose two? No, I'm not going to do that. But, you know, you can do it however you, you know, you do how you like to do it. But I just, again, I think that we should go ahead and get going, because if we look at this timeline, October 2023 is when the city commission would approve the bylaw and appoint members. So we're talking about a whole nother month from now, which is 30 days already.
Yeah. Commissioner Porter.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Williams-Cox, are you suggesting, I'm a little confused by what you were saying about an application process.
Commissioner Matlow just said they give them an opportunity to apply, I guess, potential committee members to apply. And I'm saying, I don't, for me to choose the two that I would appoint, I don't need an application process.
So would there not be time for an application process? I mean, because I don't have anyone in mind, and even if I did, I think it's fair to give everyone an opportunity to apply.
I agree.
And I also, you know, this is, this is not like every other committee, you know, this is, there's a, this is, you know, the bedrock of our city. There's nothing that could be more important, and it is something that even the most tuned-in resident, including commissioners, need help in understanding and navigating, and understanding the long-term impacts of the decisions that we could make and that other cities have made. I mean, we could go into districts, and there could be only one commissioner of color ever elected again, based on the segregation of our city. You know, so I'm not a, you know, I'm just, I don't understand, it sounds like we're all on board. I don't understand why 30 days is making the difference to really, you know, if we're doing an orientation for the citizen police review board, even before people apply or as they apply, it just seems, you know, responsible to do the same here, if not more so. I don't have anyone in mind, and I frankly would need to think through and would want to learn more about what kinds of qualities or qualifications I would want for someone to fill this role.
And I respect that.
How about 60 days?
I, on the other hand, I'm just, use whatever process you'd like to use to appoint, is what I'm saying, that we don't all have to use the same process. I can appoint based on, you know, just like I do with other boards. I can, you know, they do apply, we got a list of applicants that just sit there, but I do know people in the community who will come to me and say that they're interested in stuff, and I've worked with them, and that I know. So it's, you choose the process that you want to choose to select, who you want, I am just not going to be interviewing 30 people to choose two.
Yeah, I mean, we're all going to have our different opinion. One thing to keep in mind, seven weeks, two months, 60 days, would that be enough to appoint, to figure out who you would like to appoint to the charter review? One way to look at the schedule is, you notice that we don't even make appointments until October of 2023. City commission appoints bylaws and appoints members. We could put it at the end of October. It doesn't have to be at the beginning of October, but the schedule allows flexibility within October to do so. Now, individually, we all might go to Jim and say, okay, we all have our members in mind that we'd like to appoint. We can do it at the beginning. Somebody might need an extra month, we can do it at the end. But I'm comfortable with the timeline that we have. I mean, you're looking at basically seven weeks, two months, to be able to make the appointments and give Jim time to bring back proposed bylaws for adoption, and I'm comfortable with the motion on the table.
And the last meeting in October is October 25th.
25th, okay. Commissioner Matlow.
Mr. Mayor.
60 days.
Well, I mean, it's enough once the bylaws are done. So I'll make a substitute motion that we have 60 days to appoint the board after the bylaws are adopted, and then keep the rest of...
Second thought.
...the schedule in accordance.
Okay, well, okay, that's exactly what is being proposed. Bylaw adoption and appointment to the members in October of 2023.
No, no. Adopt the bylaws in October as discussed, and then after the committee, we have a bylaws for our committee, give us 60 days to make the appointments.
Which would take us to...
So you're talking about making appointments to the charter review commission in December?
Yes, yep, missed the motion.
I'm not going to support the substitute respectfully. I think that we could appoint and move forward in 60 days. There is a substitute motion, though, on the table by Commissioner Matlow. There is a second by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment on the substitute motion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the substitute motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes, 3-2. Now we have adjusted the schedule for bylaw adoption to be in October and then appointments to be in December. Okay. Sounds great. We just took care of business. Everybody happy?
Mm-hmm.
That's great. Okay, why don't we go ahead as five...
We look at Jim, see if, because he's got to do it.
I just wanted to make sure from Commissioner Williams-Cox, since the substitute motion passed, we'll bring back an agenda item at the appropriate time. Never mind, got it.
Absolutely.
And the appropriate time to bring the agenda item back is we and Jim.
Well...
Next meeting, Jim.
Probably need to bring you something back at the next meeting that outlines what you just did, but not that stipulates what to do. You just gave that direction. There we go.
Okay.
All right, we're going to take a break. We'll be back at 6 o'clock for the public hearing, and we will take care of the rest of city commission business after. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the public hearing to order at 6:07. I'm sorry that we are a couple of minutes tardy, but nonetheless, let's get moving. All right. Madam Attorney, 14.01, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 14.01 is the first and only public hearing on resolution number 23-R-21, a resolution abandoning the entire right-of-way known as Franklin Court, located on the east side of South Franklin Boulevard, just north of East Jefferson Street in the city of Tallahassee, Leon County, Florida. Recommended action is option one, conduct public hearing and adopt resolution number 23-R-21, thereby abandoning the entire right-of-way of Franklin Court, based on the findings and recommendations of the Development Review Committee, the information contained in the agenda item, and any evidence presented at the hearing hereon. Planning staff is available to address any questions you may have.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Cook?
No, sir, we do not.
Colleagues.
Move staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation's been properly moved by the mayor Protem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0, 14.02. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-O-23, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, creating a foreclosure registry, providing findings, purpose, and intent of the ordinance for the registration and inspection of distressed properties within the city of Tallahassee, Florida, for posting and maintenance requirements for distressed properties within the city of Tallahassee, Florida, and for penalties and enforcement, providing for conflict, severability, and effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-O-23. Proposed ordinance number 23-O-23 was introduced on June 14, 2023. The ordinance will help address the urban blight that can significantly impact neighborhoods. Foreclosed or foreclosing properties that are not maintained can lead to blight and other nuisances that can impact surrounding neighborhoods. Proposed ordinance established a foreclosure registry requiring the mortgagee of real property subject to foreclosure to register that property with the city. Registration includes the following: property address, identity, and contact information for the mortgagee and servicer, designation and contact information for the local property manager, payment of an annual registration fee. Proposed ordinance also requires a mortgagee to have the distressed property physically inspected within 10 days of taking an action that renders the property distressed. Deputy City Attorney Amy Toman and Department Director Dr. Campbell Thomas are available to address questions regarding this item.
Wonderful, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Move option one.
Second. It's been properly moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 14.03. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.03 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-O-26, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, established in a community development district to be known as the East Ridge Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, naming the district, describing the external boundaries of the district, describing the functions and powers of the district, designating five persons to serve as the initial members of the district's board of supervisors, providing for conflict, severability, and effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance 23-O-26, establishing the East Ridge Community Development District. A CDD is an independent special district authorized by Chapter 190 of the Florida statutes. The power of the CDD include the ability to finance, construct, and manage certain infrastructure systems, facilities, services, and improvements. Petition further requests the city's consent for the CDD to have the ability to provide parks and facilities for indoor and outdoor recreation. and facilities for indoor and outdoor recreation, cultural and educational uses, and to, and to provide security as authorized in Section 190.012 of the Florida statutes. A planned unit development was approved for the property at the June 14, 2023 City Commission meeting. The ordinance was introduced on June 14, 2023. The proposed development is generally south of McKissicki Road, east of Interstate 10, and north of Mahan Drive. The property is referred to at times as the Walani Hill. The proposed CDD would encompass approximately 893 acres of land. Senior Assistant City Attorney Lou Norvell, along with the representative of Great Point Developers, the petitioner, are available to address any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
As the attorney noted, Richard Derobbe is here to answer questions. Other than that, no speakers.
Excellent, okay.
Move for Option 1.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim for Option Number 1, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. 14.04. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.04 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance Number 23-Z-21, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory located on 2.53 acres located at 3333 Thomasville Road near I-10 approximately 375 feet south of the intersection of Raymond Dill Road and Thomasville Road as and in the city of Tallahassee Commercial Parkway from Office Residential on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and provided an effective date. Recommended action is Option 1, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance Number 23-Z-21, thereby amending the official map from the Office Residential Zoning District to the Commercial Parkway Zoning District based on the findings and, and conditions of the planning commission, information contained in this agenda item and any evidence presented at this hearing. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system. Planning staff is available should you have any questions on this item.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
Aaron Tilton is here on behalf of the applicant. If you have questions, other than that, no speakers.
All right.
Move Option 1, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Curtis Richardson probably moves Option Number 1 as their second to the motion.
Second.
Seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 14.05. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 14.05, the second and final public hearing regarding the airport gateway corridor Brownfield area designation. Recommended action is Option 1, conduct the second and final public hearing on Resolution Number 23-R-15 to designate the airport gateway corridor as a state Brownfield area. City Commission approval is being requested to designate a portion of the airport gateway corridor as the state Brownfield area. Following designation of this area, redevelopers of projects in the area will have an opportunity to take advantage of various incentives offered by the state and federal Brownfields program. The designation will also complement the Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency Gateway Project that is set to improve much of the same area, grow ways between now and 2028. Department Director Alyssa Myers is available should you have any questions on this item.
Wonderful. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Max Epstein will speak on this item. We don't have anyone in chambers.
Great. Mr. Epstein, are you with us? Mr. Epstein?
First of all, yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Your name and address for the record, please. Three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Road. I just want to thank you again for this item. I think this is the first step to help clean up the central drainage ditch. We know that PCBs, lead, arsenic, petroleum byproducts, and all sorts of other toxins have been dumped directly into the central drainage ditch over the years. Obviously, that happened for the most part a while ago, but I'd like to remind you again that this also is the Capital Cascades 4 area. And according to the original EECC report, the goal was to clean up this area, add redevelopment capacity, address incongruent zoning, and turn the entire area into a wetland treatment zone. So as we move forward, my previous comments about trying to incorporate that project also into the airport gateway when you go into your budget discussions tomorrow, I think is important. There are some parcels that were recommended by me and others that were not added that I think should be looked at. South of Capital Circle and north of Lake Munson, there are known brownfields in the city of Tallahassee Old Trash Dumps. There is a residential neighborhood that was built right off of Lake Bradford. And at one of these public meetings, one of the residents was there saying that when they dig in their backyard, they still get trash. I know that this is residential versus commercial, but I think the city should look into this. And then there's also the Leon Arm Stormwater Pond, which is on the St. Mark's Trail. It's actually labeled as a solid waste dump, and it's always full of algae and disgusting. I really think that should be taken a look at as part of Capital Cascades 4 and the airport gateway. I'd also like to inform you that FSU is finishing up, along with FAMU, a $2 million EPA grant to study the water, air, and soil quality of Lake Munson, Munson Slough, and the central drainage ditch, along with the eastern and western drainage ditches. We hope to have your support here. This is a first-of-its-kind study that integrates many different disciplines and can really inform you going forward and save a lot of money when it comes to testing for this brownfield. So thank you. I hope you approve this. I hope you take a look at these additional parcels at some point and support the FSU-FAMU EPA grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
No further speakers.
Okay, colleagues.
Move Option 1, as recommended by staff.
Option Number 1 has been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 14.06.
Item number 14.06 is the first of two public hearings on the development agreement for Capital Circle Office Complex. Second, the second public hearing is scheduled for September 27, 2023. Recommended action is Option 1, conduct the first of two public hearings on the development agreement for Capital Circle Office Complex and schedule the second public hearing for September 27, 2023 at 6 o'clock PM in the City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Item requests that the City Commission hold the first of two public hearings concerning a development agreement between the city and the state of Florida concerning the development of Capital Circle Office Complex. The property is located west of Capital Circle, southeast and north of Tram Road, and is approximately 341 acres. The proposed development contains office space and a new state emergency operations center. Department Director John Reddick is available should you have any questions on this item.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have one speaker on this item, Darren Taylor. Just here to answer questions.
Excellent.
No other speakers.
All right, colleagues.
Move Option 1, as recommended by staff, Mr. Mayor.
Option Number 1 has been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney, do we have any other items on the public hearing to come before the City Commission tonight?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Excellent. We are back on policy formation direction. Item 12.03. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask for the image related to 1203 to be pulled up. Mayor and Commissioners, this item's request your initiation of an out-of-cycle small-scale comprehensive plan map amendment for property on Tennessee Street, east of Dewey Street. You can see it here. It, it runs eastward from where the University Inn and Suites is there in the top of the picture. It would be along that roadway for your orientation. It would allow for a higher-density infill development inside the downtown overlay area. An action today would start the amendment process, and the requested amendment would go to the Planning Commission this fall with a final City Commission public hearing in December. We're seeking your approval of this item.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues, looking for direction, discussion.
Move for Option 1 to initiate this out-of-cycle small-scale map.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 12.04. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At your last commission meeting, you requested a discussion regarding the hiring of the next place director. As you know, the, the job is vacant. And the place director position is a multifaceted position that necessitates strong leadership qualities. It oversees many areas, addressing complex issues. And the ideal candidate will foster strong communication and coordination between not only the place departments that include planning, blueprint, OEV, and OEV includes our minority business division, but also other city and county departments as it integrates within the efforts. It sits between the city and the county. The, the position also coordinates with the Florida Department of Transportation, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Water Management District, the CRTPA, and many others. And so clearly, you need a broad set of skills with the acumen in planning and development. In June, we began the search for the place director. We advertised, and I'm pleased to say we got good candidates. It's a unique position, and so you're not always sure what the, the level of candidates would be. We, myself and the county administrator, the management oversight of this position, we have conducted interviews, and we're in the process of finalizing and identifying our top candidate at this point. This item, it brings back to you for your thoughts, input, and we, and I ask that you accept this update.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do have one speaker, Max Epstein.
Okay. Mr. Epstein, are you still with us? Mr. Epstein, are you still with us?
Yes, sir. I actually kind of forgot I signed up for this item.
Name and address for the record, please. Three minutes.
Thank you. I just think that we should take our time and have an open and transparent process in selecting the next place director. There has been quite a bit of controversy surrounding the former director of place. And we need to reexamine the entire blueprint process. And we've had public meetings time after time. We have projects that are three or four times over what they originally budgeted. And there's going to be, hopefully, a discussion about this tomorrow. But it all starts with place. And, I'm sorry, let me get in my thoughts for a moment. But it's important to have an open and transparent process. And over the next year, we should spend time to reevaluate all of these projects that are way over budget and make sure that they're still in the spirit of what the voters approved in the referendum. I would recommend that you all take the next year, like I said, to find a new place director, hold open and public hearings for the blueprint projects, and then move forward as a community. Without doing that, all of the community's goodwill towards that organization will be gone. So I would like to make one suggestion, Mr. Mayor. You said debt reduction should be talked about. How about the sales tax committee buys one-year treasury bonds at 5.4%? We could actually make money over the next year while we replan all of these projects. So thank you, and I hope there's an open and transparent process.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. I appreciate your recommendation. That is illegal. We're not allowed to buy bonds with government money, I believe. So, but I understand the goodwill and intent behind that. Is there any other public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. Open it up for direction. Accept the report.
Move that Option 1.
Yes, sir.
Option Number 1 is accept the update on place directors. Probably been moved by Commissioner Richardson as their second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 12.05. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your approval to accept a grant for the Department of Juvenile Justice in the amount of $61,500. This is for the Palmer Monroe Teen Center, which opened in 2010. We've been fortunate to receive grants from our Department of Juvenile Justice, and this one, if accepted, would be, again, $61,500.
I'll move.
Is there any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Motion's been made by the Mayor Pro Tim. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any further comment? Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, I just want to, I love this program. I know I say this every time this comes out, but just great work that, that everybody's doing over there. Thank you, Ashley.
Agreed. Agree. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Mr. Manager, do we have any other business come before us during policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
All right, we are on unengaged speakers. Mr. Clerk, I hear we have quite a few people that would like to address us tonight.
That's correct, Mayor. We've got 20 or 25 people, most of them here, and ready to begin. We'll take our first.
Sounds great.
Gil Ziffer, followed by Lenoris Barber.
Former Commissioner Gil Ziffer, it is great to see you in chambers this evening, sir. You know the drill. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you for having me, Mayor and Commissioners. Gil Ziffer, 1448 Terrace Street, Tallahassee, Florida. Everybody, actually, this is the first meeting that I have either been to or haven't watched on TV either in five years. I now know a lot of the things that I missed, and I know some of the things that I don't miss. But it's good to be here. Actually, it's been, it was 14 years ago and a couple of days I was appointed, and that's the last time I've been at this dais, was giving that speech. So I'm going to try to keep it, and I should keep it in three minutes. Thank you all for your service. I know what it's like to be on your side, and so what I'm about to propose to you hopefully makes sense. I have met with all of you individually, and I'm not going to talk about those conversations because that's between us individually. In 2024, the city of Tallahassee will be celebrating its 200th anniversary. That's quite a milestone. And I have a suggestion for a birthday present from the city to the citizens of Tallahassee. The city of Tallahassee Utilities owns over 400 acres immediately to the northeast of the Canopy Development, north of Flashman Road. The city's land sits between part of Centerville Road to the west, McCosicki Greenway immediately to the south, and Interstate 10 to the north, and not far from the New Amazon facility. I'm proposing the city carve out a good-sized portion of its 400-plus acres and put that land into, and this would be up to the city attorney, either permanent conservation easement or something similar that will keep it from ever being developed commercially. What I'm suggesting should not alter the route plan for Wallany Boulevard. There should be plenty of acreage for building with something that really is truly needed in our north side, and that is affordable housing. One of the big costs for any developer in building affordable housing or any housing is the land. You own the land. And so there should be an opportunity to build things that are really cost-efficient and give people the opportunity to own a home that, up to this point, have not been able to. There's enough land to also build any commercial space that might need to satisfy the needs of the folks that live there, including the people there in Canopy. And also, I might suggest the city is shortly in need of some more cemetery space, and that's a good thing to put on that land. And perhaps maybe some kind of healthcare facility, work with one of the two hospitals. You're going to probably hear, now that I've opened this Pandora's box, dozens of reasons why this can't happen. But I would suggest to you that you make policy. You make those decisions. The five of you, if you decide to do this, can make it happen, and I hope you will. Something like this doesn't happen very often, for a city to own this kind of acreage and turn it into a green space. I drove up there today, and that land is absolutely exquisite. Rolling hills, oak trees, just beautiful. If we're not careful, it could end up being bulldozed and clear cut, and none of us want that to happen. As immediate past president of the Florida State Parks Foundation, I know what the real Florida looks like. I know what the real Tallahassee looks like. As past president of the Florida League of Cities, I know there are commissions all over this state that would love to have this problem. So I'm asking you to do what's right. And I know this just today would require, would suggest direction to staff to bring something back. But seriously consider this. Save this land. Use it the way it could be, which is a park space, a green space, permanently, and yet satisfy those other needs that are needed up in the northeast. I hope you'll do it together, five oh. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this is one of those votes that not only will you remember, but you'll be remembered by. And I'm open for any questions and any suggestions, and that's my pitch.
Thanks, Commissioner. Welcome back to your chambers. Good to see you.
Good to be here. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Lenoris Barber, followed by Bernard Stevens.
Mr. Barber. Mr. Barber. Mr. Barber. All right, Mr. Stevens. Thanks for sticking it out with us. We appreciate it. Name and address for the record, please.
All right. Name is Bernard Stevens. Address is 2502 Holden Street. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish the Constitution for the United States. Constitution was made for us as a guide. Our city government, if you ask me, despotism. What is that? I'm sure we know the word of that. Oppressive behavior. The City of Tallahassee Police Department, the Chief of Police, is sad we'd have been through so many, but come to understanding, I know why. The Chief of Police don't even have full control over his own establishment because there's too many hands tied. Too many hands is inside the pot. And you know what happens to that? Lack of leadership, lack of accountability. I believe our chief is capable of making decisions on his own. We do not need a citizen police review board. He can answer for himself and his officers. And the reason how I know is because the complaint that I sent to you all on March the 4th, on March 22nd, before we had our last committee meeting, you all probably did not even take the time to look at it or read it. I got the body cam footage, and I looked at it, and every single city policy that we have was violated. And you know what that tells me? That you hold people accountable who you want to hold accountable. And then for a citizen on the street to break a law, the law enforcement, that person, he or she, may be arrested. So what does that goes to show me? Accountability as a whole for our city government has to change. I gave you all truth and transparency. Mr. Richardson, you said taxation without representation at last meeting. What is that? That's when the taxpayers are not getting represented for what they come to you with. There's no reason our city charter, after all these years you've been in office, Ms. Coxton been in office, y'all been here long enough to look at that city charter and know it needed change, unless you wanted to keep the people in mental slavery that long. There has to be a time where we have to change. And excuse me for being so passionate. I preach like this on Sunday. So every day for me is Sunday, and I'm going to give you the truth and the transparency that's deserved for our community to be able to change and thrive. I am sick of seeing blood on our streets. I am sick of people making news conferences about, oh, we just had another murder. Ever since last, every one of you all been in office. We're going to change our community. We're going to do this. We're going to do that. Our community is strong, but black-on-black crime considers considerably happens every day.
You're at 20 seconds.
Every day. There has to be a change. And these three minutes, you got to do something with that. Because I'm telling you, you give me three minutes, and then you respond, and I don't have a chance to respond. We got to change somewhere. Oppressive behavior has to stop.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Joseph Joey Davis.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Joey Davis, President of the Tallahassee Professional Firefighters. My address is exempt. Mayor Daley, Commissioners, and appointed leaders, our organization has a couple of items before you, but today I'm here to speak to you regarding our contract negotiations for your firefighters. As each of you know, we've been negotiating since late March for a one-year contract that would begin October 1st of this year. Through the 10 sessions we have had so far, we have reached little resolution to the concerns put forth by your firefighters. Last year, we were told by the DCM to bring every issue to the negotiating table, so we've done that. We have multiple issues that need to be addressed. But chief among these is our department's ability to compete for applicants and to retain employees due to salaries and cost of benefits. We have seen a drastic decrease in applicants over the last several years. Our department has gone from being in the top departments for applicants across the state to not being able to get half of the applicants from our own fire school. Of the 22 new hires that you enabled the fire chief to hire last summer, 20% of them have already left. Other departments are coming to our own fire school and out recruiting one of the best departments in the state. As a group, you have made difficult decisions to address similar issues within the police department. You've made many statements as to the importance of public safety and how competitive we as a capital city should be when seeking to recruit and retain employees. I would ask that you consider the definition of public safety and think about the role that our firefighters play in that. We're not asking to be compared directly with our brothers and sisters at TPD. We're just asking to be paid as competitively with our peers as they are, so that our fire chief can have the tools that he needs to reach the mission that the city has entrusted to our department. To our knowledge, the police offered one proposal in their negotiations that was taken during executive session. We've placed five on the table. Now, as concerned as our members are about the speed of our negotiations, I have to add that we are, we do appreciate that the city manager has been willing to begin some dialogue with our organization to make sure that we are communicating effectively and working towards a meaningful resolution. Mr. City Manager, I appreciate your leadership on the issue. And you have our commitment to continue to work with you in efforts to reach an agreement that moves us toward being competitive again.
You're at 30 seconds.
Further, I would like to invite you to consider coming and speaking briefly at our next session to help us understand the approach and priorities the city is bringing to the table. I ask each of you to take some time over the next couple of weeks to think about how you can help us make our department strong again.
Next speaker, please.
Mayor, I'm not certain of the name, but the individual identified the issue as consumer user digitalization protection. There we go. And we'll be followed by Marcus Thomas as our next speaker.
Wonderful. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'll keep that information private if I may. Thank you for your time today. I just came to advocate for, mainly for protections for consumers and end users. In these times, we've seen a lot of technological advances, and we've benefited greatly. And I think that we are also able to produce and see great output within our community that we hope to continue to do. But we also remain susceptible to the harms. So whether that be through displacement for workers or through healthcare, hoping that what we can do is to become more cognizant and more vigilant about the advancements and innovations that are coming our way and begin to be vigilant about the ethical ramifications and take these things into consideration, particularly when it comes to data privacy, maintaining autonomy, and supporting autonomy for consumers, for people who are creating for these platforms as they begin to raise more profits and be able to capitalize further and further and also invest in different communities that we are holding ourselves accountable for being able to allow regular, everyday citizens to maintain some type of profit as well. And also, in addition to that, I would like to see that we, as government or as the public, maintain pace. So as we see people or companies implement these new technologies in their stores, within their contracts, that we also are maintaining education that is keeping pace with things that are going to be marketable, things that are going to be able to be used within our own communities. So I really hope that we are able to do that. Just, in addition to these things, with adoptions of new currency, say, for instance, it's a long way out, but Bitcoin, we'll also see digitalization within the space of Web 3. And so I'm hoping that we can do some research and also investigate further into how we can protect consumers, their privacy, protect the ability for them to remain autonomous, and also for them to adopt these technologies at their own will. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Marcus Thomas, followed by Angelina LaShay.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, how's it going? My name is Marcus Tompkins, 217 West Ninth Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida. Yeah, I just came to speak just about public track facilities. Just being like a runner myself, a walker, just kind of noticed that track facilities here, they're tied to like the schools here, and sometimes like the schools are like closed or due to renovations, you know, you don't have like access to them. And so I was just wondering, is there any plans or any discussions about creating city-owned, like, public track facility that the residents can have access to a bit more frequently?
I don't think we have any plans in the works right now to build a public track, but I do encourage you to go check out the website, trailhassie.com. It's all of our park system and the county park system and all of our trail system, absolutely phenomenal. But the short answer to your question is, I don't think we have any plans. I'm looking at the manager to build a formal track, per se. But our parks have got some incredible running and hiking trails as well.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please.
Angelina LaShay, and then Harry Brown.
Your name and address for the record, please, Mr. Brown. Three minutes.
Hello, I'm Harry Brown. I reside at 5431. I'm here to talk about the city charter. Why did it take me to come up here and have people call you, Ms. Coxton, of the city charter, an item that, a governing document that's been in power for over 200 years, over eight generations? Where have you all been? You, Mr. Mayor, says you were involved in a city charter over there at the county. Well, why did you come up here and sit here and knowing what was going on with the city and did nothing about it? You shouldn't be where you sit. Why don't you go out and get out of here so we can get a decent government? And the same with you, Reese Gold. You should be long gone. And I see now, Richardson, you're up here for campaigning to be reinstated. You've been here how many years? 20-some years now, and you haven't done what you should have been doing.
Language, please, Mr. Brown. Language.
Beg your pardon?
Let's watch our language, please.
What am I saying wrong?
Maybe I misunderstood what you said.
You better listen up because you weren't listening to the previous man that was up there.
I'm having a hard time hearing you anyways.
What you need to do is get you some hearing aids. But anyway, I don't want to waste my time with you.
Can you pull the microphone down a little closer?
But look, you all are not doing what you're supposed to do. And if you're talking about redoing the city charter, what you should look at is look at other cities and what they're doing. Because you've been sitting here for all these years and done nothing. First of all, before you do anything with the city charter, look at putting some new blood, young blood up there, and make certain your city charter have provision for employees. And the city charter you have now, you got no provision in there for city employees. That means the city charter is being run in the very same way by those people who wrote the city charter, and that was during slavery. So that means it's still being conducted with slave mentality. I could go on and on, but I want you to know, I have just written a book, and it will be coming out sometime next month, my brother should tell me. And the title of that book is, I overcame, oh, you get me upset here, Tom.
You're at 30 seconds.
I overcame evil. Overcame evil by doing good, prayer, humility, and compassion. Okay? Read that book. I want you all to read that. You'll know the hell I went through for 19 years and three months. And I started that hell when I walked through the door, and I was still going through it when I left.
You're at three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I just saw that orange light come on. It was only on for two seconds. Now you say I'm through. You got a button up there that you push.
Thank you. No, sir.
Something wrong with what you do.
No, sir. It was on for 30 seconds.
Yeah, okay.
Appreciate you coming down.
Next speaker is Donald, is Donald Glasper.
All right.
Followed by Spencer Leone Brass.
That's great.
Thanks for joining us.
Good afternoon.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Donald Glasper, 2613 Mission Road. I was really hoping I could be there where everybody could walk away and retain what I'm about to say. But nevertheless, I appreciate your time. I'm going to start with, begin with the end in mind. Like Commissioner Ziffer, I've had conversations, either personal or by phone, with all of the commissioners. Let me back up. I'm with the Griffin Heights Neighborhood Association, and I'm a part of a work group for the John G. Riley Park. Also, Mr. Ted Houston, who's not here, he's co-chair with me. We're very passionate about the John G. Riley Park. We start coming before this body in March, having some discussions about improving it. The mayor said, let's get the money out the door. And to a person, the commissioners that I've talked with has expressed some disappointment, if not dismay, in thinking that we were much further along in the process in terms of getting some basic amenities. So this is our ask at the moment. We're looking to get a canopy, a canvas, over the picnic area. In North Florida, you can get a pop-up shower anytime. We have an amphitheater out there. We want a canopy. This is the ask. I'm reiterating. We want a few more benches around the amphitheater. You talk about engaging the community. There's some passionate people here. There are some work groups, like the Lamp Lighters. I've been coming down here, and we applauded them, and they're doing wonderful thing.
You're at 30 seconds.
And so in zip code 32304, where this park is, there are community members that's ready to embrace the challenge with you. Lastly, I think back in March, I said, inspect what you expect. We have a meeting with your staff. I'm cautiously optimistic. So far, we haven't been able to get much movement. Give me two seconds.
Two seconds. Wrap up your thoughts. Yes, sir.
Okay. This meeting is at the Day Street Lawrence McGregor. It'll be on the 31st, Thursday. It'll be on the 31st. So we invite you all to come. My ask again, I'll leave you. We're looking for a canopy, a canopy.
Thank you.
A canopy and a sliding board for our babies.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Spencer Leone Brass.
Good to see you, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
You too. Spencer Leone Brass, 2020 West Pensacola Street. Good to see you, Commissioner Porter. Glad to see you're doing better. We come before you tonight as a group of organized stakeholders, business owners, property owners, and concerned citizens for the community of West Pensacola Street and the surrounding areas. As stakeholders, we are suffering every day. We're suffering with robberies, assaults, burglaries, stalking, and murders. We come before you tonight to demand the end to this rhetoric. Our businesses, tenants, customers can no longer take every Our businesses, tenants, customers can no longer take every single day being in fear for our lives as we try to make a living and build something for the city to be proud of. The excuse that there is not enough law enforcement because of funding is simply not valid. In a billion-dollar budget, there are cuts that can be made, there are things that can be moved, and there are more strategic avenues to, to address the issues that are plaguing our community each and every day. Hell, we need 100 more police officers, and we need to support that department wholeheartedly. I want to bring to your attention the Social 2700 Apartment Complex. It's 250 units, it's across the street from the Kearney Center and along Pensacola Street. This property was built and sold in 2006 for $29 million, bringing a tax revenue to the city of little over $300,000. In 2017, this property sold for $9 million, reducing the tax revenue to the city for little over half. The property today should be worth upwards of $60 or $70 million, providing a tax revenue of over $1 million. In this instance, if you take it and replicate it specifically along the Pensacola Street corridor, I think the reason why there's a financial distress should be very clear. Businesses are losing thousands of dollars a month in robberies, private security, repairs, and the lack of revenues by people not being, not feeling safe enough to patronize or live in a certain location. You all have an inherent responsibility to protect the members of this community, to give people a safe place to get an education and to live. The west side of campus is where you all have designed for your students to be through university transition zoning, and it's time to put your money where your mouth is. Tonight is the night that this must end. You must stand up, you must come together, you must strategize, and you work, you must work toward common sense solutions before the demise is simply too great. The demise of property values, safety, and the overwhelming feeling of insecurity must end tonight. The alarm has been sounding for a very long time, but tonight, the alarm is louder than ever. I leave you with this. A great leader is not defined by what they do in times of success, but a great leader is defined by what they do in times of great adversity. Stand up and be a leader that this community demands. Stand up and be a leader this community deserves. And stand up and be a leader like your business, your child, and your family would depend on if you two were being plagued by this every single day. Because truthfully, San Francisco doesn't seem too far away.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Shisara Ammanzi. Shisara Ammanzi. And then we'll hear from Tavon Dorsey.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Shisara Ammanzi, and I won't be stating my address. And we're visiting the Civilian Police Review Board today. Tallahassee Community Action Committee would like to highlight installed policies preventing community control over the police, such as the inability to influence budget, call special sessions, determine their own role, act unbiased in their meeting, establish their own social media, and et cetera. The Tallahassee Community Action Committee is currently organizing campaigns against such policies, and we denounce commissioners voting against them. We would also like to highlight the city government's continuity in protecting and glossing over issues that are directly or indirectly supporting police brutality, such as the Tallahassee Police Training with War Criminals, unnecessary and excessive brutality against people like Jack West Kirkland, and Police Department support of homophobic organizations like the Billy Graham Evangelist Association. Tallahassee Community Action Committee denounces such actions and continues to demand for the installation of policies for community control over who is policing us and how we are being policed, or essentially the Civilian Police Review Board, and eventually the Civilian Police Ability.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Tavon Dorsey. Tavon Dorsey followed by Tito W. L. Leaden.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tavian Dorsey. I live at 228 Dixie Drive. I stand firmly in opposition to the limitations placed upon the Civilian Police Review Board. The city has completely gutted Tallahassee residents' ability to hold police accountable for their abuses of power. This is especially concerning, given the scale of TPD and the recent focus on targeting unhoused individuals. City police have upwards of $66 million in resources and are using it to make the lives of our communities most vulnerable harder, just because they dare to ask for help from passerby's. People experiencing homelessness are your, are your neighbors and vital community members. No amount of oppression and intimidation by the police will change this. With this shameful move and the countless other transgressions against civilians by TPD, it is apparent that they have no interest in truly creating a safe community. We demand the reversal of the new policies and procedures made by TPD for the Civilian Police Review Board. The CPRB should have the power to create their own press releases and public statements, engage in community outreach, determine police policy, and respond to police misconduct and abuse. We will continue to organize for a Civilian Police Accountability Council, and will fight for the CPRB to have real power so they can hold police accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Tito W. L. Leaden, followed by Regina Joseph.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hey there, how you doing? Tito William Leaden, 2855 Apalachee Parkway. We do not like the revisions to the powers and functions of the Civilian Police Review Board. The CPRB's purpose is a tool of accountability for the police, and, you know, the people should be able to interface with that tool, right? It's supposed to be the voice of the people, and they can't interface with that. The CPRB isn't allowed to do community outreach, not allowed to post flyers, not allowed to send emails, not allowed to have a website, right? How would the people be able to, you know, hold the police accountable through this organ if they can't do those things? And this is my only issue. The chair is allowed to cancel meetings at any time, and the members shall conduct themselves in an unbiased manner, quote unquote, in fact and appearance, meaning each member should remain impartial, fair, and objective. And that's very ironic, because there's no objective way, you know, say what's unbiased, right? It's a subjective term. So something like when Taylor Burrow was kicked out the board, that's a very subjective thing that y'all did. But, yeah. Furthermore, I think that the revisions aren't good, and they should go back to the drawing board. Yeah, that's it.
Great. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Regina Joseph, to be followed by Delilah Pierre.
Name and address for the record, please.
Regina. So first of all, I want to say that I've been going to these commission meetings for a while, and I think it's really messed up that the firefighters have to beg every single time to get the marginalist amount of funding. That just makes absolutely no sense. Like, they get paid like the least amount as first responders compared to like almost the entire state. And I think that just goes to show you the priorities of Tallahassee, because the priorities of Tallahassee is not really for the people. It's really about making sure that developers get more money and making sure that this triumvirate of evil that is on the city commission continues to support the rich and to continue to support developers and don't support the working-class people that live here. The police already get one-third of the budget. That doesn't include, that's like, what, $66 million or something around that? It also doesn't include the millions of dollars in grants that they get from the department, the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, and also national grants. And you see in the budget for a recent grant that they got, because they wanted to prevent, you know, vehicular accidents, right? I think that's something that we all care about. People shouldn't get hit by cars. I've seen, you know, plenty of people who have been hurt and killed by cars. So I understand you want to, you know, fund that, but one of the things that is being funded is a bomb robot. Can someone explain to me how a bomb robot would prevent a vehicular incident? It doesn't. We know, the most basic sociological studies will show you that crime is not due to just people being evil, unless you're a politician. It has to do with mental illness and poverty. But the city and certain commissioners here have voted to end the moratorium on utilities. They also voted to close down the homeless shelter that existed on mayhem. The city continues to do things that are against the interests of people, that'll make it so that they are not homeless, make it so that they don't have to resort to crime, make it so that when you're having a mental health crisis, you're not being sent to jail, you're not being sent to Leon County Sheriff's Office.
You're at 30 seconds.
Whatever. A black person is five times more likely to be stopped for no cause than a white person. We are 30% of the population of the United States. We make up the majority of the prison population. That is a problem. And you have the city where we have the most basic, basic, I mean, it doesn't really do anything, review board, where we went to the review board meetings, and everything the city has put in this, you know, this charter, they did that because we were going, because we mobilized the people to go to this.
Thank you so much.
Every time we fight, they fight against us. Every time we say we want the most basic rights, they take away our ability to do that, and that is a problem.
Please wrap up your comments, please. Thank you very much. We're at 3 minutes. Thank you.
And also, just to let you know, there is no such thing as black-on-black crime, okay? Because we don't call it white-on-white crime when people at FSU are raping other people. We don't call it white-on-white crime when we see all these other incidences. It is not a thing. It is a racist myth that exists to oppress black people.
Will you please step down, Ms. Joseph?
Will you please step down?
Let's allow, have everybody the opportunity to speak. Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Delilah Pierre, I will not be giving my address. Yeah. So y'all obviously don't care at all about having a civilian police review board that has any real power, any real measure of accountability for the people in our system and the community of Tallahassee. And you think it's an intelligent decision. You laugh, you sit with each other, you think yourselves clever because you're deconstructing, destroying any ability the civilian police review board has to change things by taking away its power to call for independent public press releases, by taking away its power to have special sessions, by making it able for the inspector general to cancel meetings for the civilian police review board whenever he wants, by making it impossible for the civilian police review board on their own behalf to demand that their own policies change, making it impossible for citizens to talk about the, to city staff about the civilian police review board during their meetings. Oh, and also, for some reason, also taking away the power for them to give community, to do any kind of community outreach, treat an independent social media account, to have any kind of ability to publicize their events, or even to post their annual report, which you reviewed six months later than when they released it. Six months later. If I'm incorrect, you can correct me, but it took y'all quite a while. Y'all don't want them to have any of those powers, any of the powers of the democracy that they're supposed to have, because you think you're clever. But guess what? Most idiots think they're clever. Your attitude is shortsighted and stupid. There will be a conversation about police accountability in Tallahassee, and either we can have it right now, or we can have it later. The truth of the matter is, your police officers continue to abuse the rights of people in Tallahassee. You partner with Eddie Gallagher, a war criminal. You allow a police officer to speak at the Billy Graham Evangelistic Association, an organization of transphobes and homophobes, despite this city claiming to care about queer and trans rights. You claim to care about things, but then you let your police officers do the opposite. You let your police officer use methamphetamines, and then when he gets called out for it, you fire the public ethics board member who was responsible for calling out for it, calling him out for it. That's the kind of attitude and behavior y'all have. The complete and total disgust city commissioners John Daley, Diane William Cox, and Curtis Richardson have for the people, have for the black masses, have for black people in this city, black, poor people in this city. And let me tell y'all.
You're at 30 seconds.
Your reckoning will come. We demand that you reverse the policies and procedures you've put into the civilian police review board. It's heinous. Your action and behavior is heinous, and it will be called out, because your police will keep on messing up because they're idiots, like you. An idiot is someone who thinks in a shortsighted manner, who thinks that just because they remove a board for police accountability, the call for police accountability will end. Y'all saw the George Floyd uprising of 2020.
You're at 3 minutes.
Y'all saw that the people in this country want the system of accountability for policing to change.
Thank you very much.
And instead of taking these comments.
Thank you.
As something to actually use, you instead choose to destroy the board, even with the people who want to dismantle the board altogether.
Thank you very much. We have a list of people.
Watch what the people will do. I don't care.
We have a list of people that would like to speak. Our next speaker, please.
Arthur Bielovas. Who will correct me if I pronounce the name wrong, and will be followed by Jennifer Pierce.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Arthur Bielovas, 75 Paul Russell Road. I'm here on behalf of an apartment complex named Mystic Woods, located on 317 Mabry, about a block away from the Kearney Center.
Could you pull that microphone down a little bit, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's 317 Mabry Street. It's about a block away from the Kearney Center. And I'm here to ask for your assistance in helping us to address the homeless situation and the crime that's associated with that, because it's more than just homeless. It's drug use, prostitution, and everything else. And I'm really specifically asking you to enforce the loitering laws and the public nuisance laws that already exist, and to enforce those laws and to direct the police to enforce those laws evenly. But what is most egregious is the complete lack of enforcement around the shelters themselves, specifically the Kearney Center. When you have a shelter that's one or two blocks away, there's no reason for homeless people to loiter around the area. When I've called law enforcement to remove individuals from our property, which again is located a block away, they pulled up a map from the property appraiser's office from within their patrol car and told me that if they're a few feet from my property, but not technically on it, there's nothing you can do about it because they're on, but they're on public property. But that's a lie, isn't it? Because if you were to start, if they were to start putting up tents on front lots of government buildings or your houses where the first few feet is public property, you would have them removed. And let's, let's be honest here, you do remove them. You do remove them from the wealthier neighborhoods. So what I'm asking you to do is enforce the law evenly. Take the same action that you do in wealthier communities and remove them from public properties that are in communities that are not as privileged. We also have the same right. By your selective enforcement, you are harming the businesses that are most vulnerable to the effects of the crime that are caused by these individuals. At Mystic Woods, our security bill went up from $200 a month to $4,000 per month to patrol the property. We had to increase our lawn garbage pickup because these homeless people leave behind syringes, drug paraphernalia. They're having sex behind dumpsters. They're starting fights with each other. We've had homeless people sleeping on our porches. We've had our clubhouse broken into several times.
You're at 30 seconds.
We've lost thousands in rent because our tenants are scared and move out, and it's difficult to find new ones that are okay with the mayhem because of your selective enforcement. So please help. That's what I'm asking today. Please enforce the same laws in the poorer neighborhoods that you do in the wealthier ones. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Jennifer Pierce, and then Stephen Leone.
Name and address for the record, please.
Jennifer Pierce, 1383 Conservancy Drive East. I'm here to speak today about the crime going on in the West Pensacola Corridor and the surrounding areas. I've had an office off Pensacola Street for about 20 years. I used to work late regularly and alone. I would walk the parking lot often and alone. I felt confident in having all of our employees work alone. Those days are gone. Over the past several years, we have spent over $40,000 in lighting improvements, $75,000 in cameras across our properties, and countless man-hours calling the police to enforce trespassing rights as landowners. We have added access control to our office, requiring you to be buzzed in, because we had so many scary incidents of people wandering in, demanding things from us, and refusing to leave when asked. We have hired Rome Security during the night for all of our properties, and for one property, we even had to hire a full-time security officer to patrol during the day. Our insurance company has told us that our premiums are significantly higher due to the crime rate of the 3230. the crime rate of the 32304 zip code. We had one long-term tenant, Tijuana Flats, terminate their lease early due to crime problems and their inability to effectively manage the influx of uninvited patrons to their restaurant. We just recently learned that all the military tenants located at our shopping center on Pensacola Street are terminating. The reason? Crime in the area and their employees do not feel safe coming to work. We estimate the loss of just those two tenants per year to be over $200,000. In total, we estimate the economic impact of crime just on our business, one location on Pensacola Street, to be north of $500,000, and that amount grows daily. Personally, I have been scared numerous times. The most recent event occurred when I was leaving the office, and someone came up to my car and started banging on the window and trying to open my door. I was so scared, I just erratically pulled onto a Cali road and frankly thought it would be better to be in a car accident than to be alone with that person. This is just one of many stories I could tell. The west side of Tallahassee is suffering. We need your help. We need more police in our area. We need to support the police who are there. We need the police to be empowered to take any action necessary. Business owners and residents of our area deserve to feel safe in their homes and offices. We need your attention, commitment, and actionable steps to be taken to improve our area. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Stephen Leoni, followed by Maria Greco.
Name and address for the record, please.
Stephen Leoni, 2020 West Pensacola Street. I wanted to come speak with you this evening. I know I've spoken to several of you before about the issues that are plaguing our side of town, and I know Jennifer and Spencer already spoke a lot of things. I don't want to repeat a lot of it, but one of the things I was going to request was trying to establish the West End District. We've been working for many years trying to put together some sense of place and get support from the commission to ask the planning director to look into these things and bring it forward to try and improve wayfinding, sense of place, bike paths, just stuff to really improve the West End District and try to get that name adopted. So I was hoping that we could get direction from staff to bring something back on this. And then, I guess about the crime, we've had significant issues. I know others have spoken about it, and it's, the violent crime is out of control. We have shootings all the time. We feel that, you know, we're staunch supporters of law enforcement. We feel we don't have enough. We feel that they're not paid enough, and we probably need 100 to 200 more police officers. And I know you guys are considering possibly raising taxes for 20, and, you know, while I don't think that's a great idea, I support it just because we need law enforcement, need a police presence. Also, probably solid waste, trying to get them, more staff, to help with cleaning the, cleaning the roads and streets that are just, you know, overrun with debris and trash everywhere. And it's not just West Pensacola Street. It's College Town, Gain Street, anywhere you go in our city now, you see a huge uptick in these things. And I know Reginald with solid waste would really need help with extra staff. Also, I brought forward, when meeting with city manager Reese Code.
About 30 seconds.
Possibly finding a way to have a substation on the west side of town and work with the other agencies like the Capitol Police, FSU, Highway Patrol, City of Tallahassee, County Sheriff's Office. Somehow, like maybe have a joint facility that everyone would, would give some time and effort to, to help really jumpstart the need to address the violent crime.
You're at three minutes.
And not just the violent crime, but also just even the petty crimes. I have a lot of parents and residents complaining all the time and businesses constantly.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Leoni. Our next speaker, please.
Maria Greco, and then Mary Ann Clements.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Maria Greco, 317 Maybury Street. I'm a business owner in Tallahassee. I've also been a pilot for over 40 years and owned a real estate brokerage for 25 years. It was that flying job that got me to Tallahassee. I flew lobbyists into the town, fell in love with this beautiful city, and decided to make a big investment in 2005. I've enjoyed providing rental property and running a successful business until about 18 months ago, when the area changed for us. I'm not here to tell you that the problem is with the homeless at the Kearney Center because a lot of the people in that situation are there to improve it and move on. The problem is with the drug addicts, drug dealers, prostitutes who wander freely on Pensacola Street. The bills bondsman on the corner has drug dealers, addicts, and prostitutes conducting illicit business activities in plain view across the street from a daycare center without any consequences. These people trespass our properties and the surrounding businesses. My tenants and students have left, and the days of tailgate parties along Pensacola Street for FSU games is history. We now spend much of our budget hiring private security because we have absolutely no help from the police department. On May 27th, I was brutally assaulted at my place of business twice in one day, the second one as a result of poor policing by TPD, as acknowledged by TPD after reviewing body cams. The TPD has made it clear their hands are tied. This is ludicrous. The assailants are still roaming around in my property. They look at me, they laugh at me, all based on a biased report made by the police. 10 witnesses against me. I ask you, since when in this city did law-abiding citizens become the invisible parties? What happened to good, old-fashioned police work? This breakdown in policing allows crimes to continue without justice. This destroys law-abiding, hard-working community leaders from continuing to contribute to our community by providing services and dwelling. It appears like the bad guys are controlling the police. Despite what has happened to me, I'm moving forward. I'm not so much afraid for me anymore, but very much afraid for this city, what will happen without proper police enforcement and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mary Ann Clements. Mary Ann Clements, and then Jacqueline Clements.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Mary Ann Clements, 317 Maybury Street in Tallahassee. Agreed to speak before I realized that the subject is crime, when I mistakenly thought the subject was breaking of laws. I've lived at this address since 2007. All I had to do was come to this meeting to decide that I'm afraid to go outside my door, especially when it's dark. Breaking of laws, for example, how they can lead to crime. And I've seen this in Chicago, where I was born and raised. Trespassing can lead to panhandling, leads to theft, leads to assault, leads to murder. My daughter's been with me recently, and sometimes, late at night, we hear what sounds like a gunshot. Is it a gunshot? Is it fireworks? What the hell is it? I never heard this when I first started living there. So it's changing drastically. I will talk about the homeless group on the adjacent property. They trespass, they've panhandled up to me, they've made comments to me, approached me when it wasn't their place to do so. I called one of our county commissioners, his assistant. They called the sheriff's department. Sheriff's department called me and told me there isn't anything we can do about it, except possibly suggest they go to a shelter. But I came to this meeting, I didn't realize that a shelter in Mahan was recently closed. So where are we telling these people to go? Instead of going somewhere else, they're continuing to set up their living room on the property adjacent to ours. It's not, it's not a good scene. I've seen one lady come from that group, walk up to our trash dumpsters, dump a basket of stuff in, go back, go back five minutes later, dump some stuff in, go back. She did this about 30 times. No wonder our trash is overflowing, and we can't seem to keep up with it.
You're at about 20 seconds remaining.
That's the only one. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Jacqueline Clements. And then Fletcher Dillmore.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Dr. Jacqueline Clements. My address is 317 Maybury Street. Thanks so much for this opportunity to speak. I've spent nearly half my life in DC, Baltimore, and Los Angeles, cities known for their high rates of homelessness and crime, but never have I seen such blatant disregard for the citizens west of FSU Stadium, along the West Pensacola Street corridor, than I have in this past year as I caretake for my mom. This tension has been building for years now, but so you have a taste of what we've experienced recently. Repeatedly being approached for money in our parking lot, illegal dumping in our dumpster, prostitution on our corners, people crossing the dangerous section of Pensacola and Maybury, where there is no streetlight, where a pedestrian fatality occurred in November last year. Multiple drug deals in broad daylight in our parking lot, sexual liaisons in our clubhouse bathrooms, recent double homicide at the McDonald's down the street, more gunshots late in the night than I can count, at least five separate occasions in the last two months alone. It is abysmal that my older mother should have to witness this, let alone feel threatened by it. No one deserves to live in fear of taking out the trash or walking from the car to their apartment. But moreover, I include in this dismay the citizenry of West Pensacola Street, not just owners and renters, but those who are unhoused in this area. They gather outdoors day and night along the line of our condo's property and participate in the endless cycle of criminal activity that occurs within a stone's throw from our home. Surely, they can just go down to the homeless street shelter down the street, but they don't. And why don't they? I hesitate to think of what this shelter is like when people would instead be unsheltered in a dirt lot next to the bail bond shop in the blazing heat and overnight. There's no apparent concern for these folks in leaving them unhoused. This isn't the case in other parts of Tallahassee, so why here? Clearly, this is a systemic and racist issue and a blight on the city of Tallahassee. I'll go against the grain of others here and say that we don't need more police. We actually need far fewer, but we need more resources for those living in poverty in this area. No one should be unhoused ever, anywhere, and I implore you to address this affliction because every person in this city deserves the dignity of shelter and opportunity. Thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Fletcher Dillmore, and then Jacob Leoni.
Thanks for joining us. Name and address for the record, please. Yeah, Fletcher Dillmore, 215 West College Avenue. Commercial real estate professional here in Tallahassee. I can say, I went to a shopping center yesterday, and I couldn't even get out of my truck before I was approached by, I guess the word's unhoused, right? People panhandling, knocking on my car. It's not ideal, certainly not, right? It's not the best situation we could have. I can tell you as well, I've had a building broken into three times this summer alone here in Tallahassee by fragrance, I guess, and the police are not really able to do a whole lot about it. I just ask, please untie their hands if you can, let them enforce the laws and do their job. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jacob Leoni. Jacob Leoni, followed by Griffin Brecher.
Name and address for the record, please.
Jacob Leoni, 1730 West Pensacola Street. I come to you before, come before you today as a student, recently graduated from FSU. I lived my whole life on West Pensacola Street and dropped my tenancy at Florida State. During the years that I was there, I constantly was worried about going out late, staying out late or being alone. The crime in the area has significantly gotten worse, and I can relate to my counterparts that I hear gunshots all the time. I feel that the police is not getting enough help and that they don't have, like they said, their hands are tied. The city needs to do more for them and give them more funding if so. Please make West Pensacola Street a nice, safe haven again, as it is one of our main roadways into town from the airport. I don't like thinking that parents coming in from out of town, like seeing the tents and homeless people just sleeping everywhere on the side of the road. Tallahassee needs to be viewed as a pretty and nice place that is safe for students always. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Griffin Brecher, and then Logan Short.
Thanks for joining us. Name and address for the record, please.
Griffin Broker, and I am currently at 209 Cactus Street. And I'm here today, like many others, to voice my concerns on just the general issues of homelessness, as well as the violent crime on Pensacola Street. I've been in Tallahassee now for seven years, and three of those seven years I've spent in various student housing rentals off Pensacola Street. And as I mentioned, I'm, you know, obviously now back on Cactus Street. I've been there for about two weeks now, and in those two weeks, it's been pretty shocking. I mean, I kind of had a bit of an idea of what I was getting myself into upon moving there, but I did not think that it would be quite as bad as it is. There is homeless people walking up and down the street all day long, all hours of the night. I have yet to see a single patrol car go up and down our street. Aside from that, you know, in the past years that I've spent on Pensacola Street, I have witnessed countless assaults. I've heard hundreds of gunshots, and most notably, I personally witnessed a Uber-Eat driver come to a property that I was staying at off of Pensacola and Hayden, get robbed for his car at knife point by someone that was, you know, visibly high on drugs and crashed his car down the street thereafter. And I guess my, you know, kind of question to bring to you guys is, you know, when you drive down Gain Street and College Avenue, and in College Town, the crime rates and the homelessness are virtually nonexistent, and, you know, why is that? I mean, don't you think that it should be just as big of a priority to ensure that that's not happening on Pensacola Street when it's housing an equal amount of students, if not more, over there? Just this morning, when I was leaving my street at 8:00 in the morning, I turned out onto Pensacola Street to four or five tents of people directly on Pensacola Street, just camping out. This was about 8:00 in the morning. There's people alive, dead, sleeping in the road. I mean, I don't know. You know, extremely intoxicated, and this is at 8:00 in the morning.
You have 30 seconds.
And, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, it's, this is criminal, and I'm not really here to bash homeless people at all, but I think that it definitely needs to be contained, and the issue is not really as much the homeless people, it's the crime that they're bringing in with the drugs and the prostitution, just because there are so many of them there. So I hope that there can be something done to, you know, make the lives better for everyone in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Logan Short is our last speaker in person. We do have, I believe, three additional.
Wonderful. Thanks for joining us. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Logan Short, 1242 Chee Lane. Thank you for having me. Yeah, I came here to speak upon much of what's already been discussed. I was actually happy to hear that I was the 26th person in line, and that most people had the same opinions on some things as me. Again, you know, the 32303, 32304 zip codes, they're not getting the same attention I feel the rest of the city's getting. You know, it's definitely our higher crime areas. There's been some incidents mentioned. I'm sure we all heard about the recent accident. You know, the crime's, crime's out of control, but I wanted to call you guys, you know, to really figure out a plan and maybe figure out a plan and maybe some strategy on specifically where the homeless shelter is placed. I understand, you know, it was donated and everything, but right in between, you know, there on West Pensacola, between TCC and FSU. Big conflict of interest. There is a ton of loitering, homeless and not. You know, I'd love to see that place turn into, you know, a mental clinic, maybe a sobriety clinic, educational place, and looking at maybe moving that, you know, the homeless shelter away from our campuses and where all these people are coming in. You know, it's on the way from the airport, you know, if they're going to the college, it's the first thing people see. And, you know, they're coming from all around the country and even the world, making our city better, and it's just not a great look. So that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Priscilla Hawkins, and then Jacqueline Dupont Walker.
Hawkins, are you with us? Hawkins?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Priscilla Hawkins, and I live at Button Willow Lane in Tallahassee. There are two things that I'd just like to mention, and before I even start, that I'd just say my heart goes out to what's happening on Pensacola Street, and there are some things that we know can be done in this city, and I'm sure that, at least I'm hopeful, that our commissioners will look to do something. But I'll talk about the issues that I signed up to speak about today, and they are the saving of some historic properties in Tallahassee. There are two historic houses that were built in the early 1900s by Willis Giles, and many of you may know Willis Giles. He was a prominent black entrepreneur in the early 1900s, and he is featured in Union Bank, which used to be the Freedman's Bank. And there are two houses that property has now been bought by a developer who plans, whose original plans were to, you know, to demolish the two houses, and they're going to be building student housing and parking lot, I believe. And we are hopeful, and when I say we, I, the group of us who are here to speak today, that Willis Giles, who already has a place in Tallahassee history, his homes could also be a part of letting folks know about the history of this city. They are a certain style that was popular back in the early 1900s. So we are asking that you consider, we've talked to several of the commissioners, we're asking that you consider us, helping us, keep these houses from being destroyed on September 6th. I'm going to actually also mention the Classic Cuts Barber Shop, which is over near where the new bus terminal is going to be made over on Orange Avenue, but I'm not going to take up a lot of time now because I really want Willis Giles' granddaughter, Ms. Jacqueline Dupont Walker, who's in California and was told about these houses that still exist, and she's joined with us to try and save those. So I now give up my time to Ms. Jacqueline Dupont Walker. Thank you so very much.
Dupont Walker, thanks for joining us. Name and address.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I am Jackie Dupont Walker, a native of Tallahassee, graduate of FAMU High, and the first black female undergraduate of FSU, living currently at 1621 Wellington Road in Los Angeles, California. I've lived in Tallahassee all of my formative years at 661 Kissimmee Street, 816 Eugenia, 1324 Diston, and continue to be a taxpayer at 510 Dupont Drive. Mayor Daley, City Manager Goat, and esteemed members of the City Commission, today as I listen to your deliberations, it's much like Los Angeles and many cities and communities around the country. You're dealing with charter reform, and I was an elected charter reform commissioner and served on the appointed Charter Review Commission. I deal daily with producing affordable housing. It is important to talk about reducing carbon emissions, which you're talking about, and I sit on LA Metro Board where we're dealing with electrifying the public fleet. You've talked about the vulnerable population, then you know that LA has that, and we're talking about equity today. Yes, we are all dealing with the same kinds of issues, but today I am before you about an unagenda item, saving historic property, which we deal with here, and those properties are the Giles homes. As you've heard, Willis Giles was my maternal grandfather. He and Grandma Suzie had three houses, 668, 672, and 674 St. Augustine Street in Tallahassee. Willis Giles lived in one with his wife and six children, offering two of the homes to two other families, and the records will note both black and white families. Two of the houses still stand but are slated for demolition on September 6th unless we move them to another location. We're grateful to the developer for donating them for continued use if we can get this done, but we need your cooperation, your partnership, your collaboration, as we envision how the Giles houses can contribute to telling the story of Tallahassee over the past 200 years. I support saving the two historic Willis Giles homes from demolition before September 6th, 2023, and request that the City of Tallahassee and Leon County and all of the collaborative government officials provide staff, financial support to save, move, restore, and reuse these historic structures for the benefit of Tallahassee and Leon County residents and visiting tourists. The owner of these homes... Did you stop me?
I said you have about 20 seconds.
Okay. I want to remind us that there's several things that can happen. We're already communicating with organizations about collaboration and partnership. We are working with nonprofit organizations, and by the way, I've headed a nonprofit organization restoring historic property, 1893 construction in the recent year. We have tentative locations to move them. We see this as a place for students at the elementary, high school, community college, FAMU and FSU levels to find ways to contribute precious documents. Please let me close by thanking a network I met just 10 days ago. I lovingly call them notorious activists, Max Epstein, Priscilla Hawkins, and Jose Tapia. Without their vigilance, my family and I would not have the opportunity to join in serving Leon County and the Tallahassee community in the greater Bond area one more time. Supporting the historic Giles home savings is a project that puts us on the right side of history. I look forward to the opportunity to continue work with you, and thank you for this opportunity to help tell our story.
Thank you for joining us all the way from Los Angeles. Please tell my dear friend Mayor Karen Bass I said hello.
I certainly will.
We appreciate your participation tonight.
He's a dear friend.
Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Max Epstein, and Mayor, this is the last speaker that I have any information for.
All right. Before Mr. Epstein speaks, just want to remind anybody that is here tonight that still would like to have the opportunity to speak, simply fill out the card and we're good to go. Mr. Epstein?
I thank you. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Name and address for the record.
Excellent. Thank you. It's Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Road. Thank you very much. I know this is a long evening, and I sympathize with the Tharp Street residents, as I was a resident over there for many years, but we are here seeking your help to save these homes. I've been working on this for quite some time and just met Ms. Jacqueline here about two weeks ago. We have been in communication with the developer, and really, we need funding to make this happen. Next week is when everything is lined up to happen. We've been working with growth management, the developer, everyone else that's ready to go. We need your help, and one of the issues here is that the commission didn't meet for, I think, almost two months. So that is the reason why we're here as an unagenda item. The city does have an excellent program that would have been great for this historic property grant and revolving loan program. It's exactly what we need. However, these properties were not placed on the local or national registers, even though they qualify by the owner, and when we move them, I'm not sure if they will qualify after that. So I'm hoping that you, the City Commission, or perhaps Blueprint, could incorporate these homes into an educational museum and affordable housing. This is not a handout, as you said, Commissioner Williams-Cox, these would be developed into affordable housing. There would be skin in the game to make this happen, but there has to be some sort of creative solution because this particular project does not fall directly under the historic property grant loan program. I'm pretty sure that you've received the history, and we have the support of the family that owned the homes after the Giles for about 75 years. They want to see this preserved to tell the story of Tallahassee's history. As Jacqueline said, there is property in the greater Bond area that these could go to. We have support from Christopher Daniels, and I just think this would be a wonderful way to celebrate our 200th anniversary with a focus on historic preservation. I just want you to end with this. Imagine having the chance to save the Smokey Hollow Barber Shop and not doing anything about it. So please, if you would, consider how you can support this project to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
No other speakers, Mayor.
All right. Commission discussion. Commissioner Porter, we'll start with you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have a couple of follow-up questions based on some of the comments that were made Sorry, it was a little abrupt. I need a little moment to collect my thoughts. Okay, I guess we'll start from the top. I would like to make a motion that we have an item come back to us outlining what it could look like if we were to use the property, the 400 so acres owned by our city utilities, what options there are for carving out a portion for a conservation easement or whatever that might look like, and just generally what the next steps could be or what options there are. And I can be more specific if I need to be, but I think we've all met with Commissioner Zipper about some of the ideas that he has, and I would like to explore what that might look like. So that is my motion.
Motion on table made by Commissioner Porter, bring back an agenda item regarding the 400 acres city-owned land out in the Wallonie area that was presented earlier today, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Let's have a discussion. Commissioner Mattlow.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for bringing this forward, Commissioner Zipper. Look, we have a tremendous opportunity. Nowhere else do we own hundreds of acres. We kind of had the same discussion when we bought Northwood Center of, you know, when it's publicly owned, we can control its destiny. We know conservation's important in this community. We hear from speakers every meeting about affordable housing, land for affordable housing, specifically low and extremely low-income rental housing. So I think it would be appropriate to look at opportunities to make sure we're charting its destiny, take public feedback, see how we can accomplish some of the city's biggest goals or be a part of it, and bring a community plan together and get everybody on board to really make an impact with this land. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Zipper Park's got a nice ring to it.
I don't know about that.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, motion on table, bring back...
I would.
Oh, sure. Commissioner, Mayor Protimsky.
I can support the coming back, bringing something back, but I will share that we throw affordable housing, we throw this around a lot, but affordable to who? Because someone who is in the midst of building right now just told me, there is no such thing because right now to construct something is like $300, to construct a house is like $300 per square foot. So who and where are we going to be able to afford to build homes for people, and if they get them, how are they going to keep them? So you talk about, as the example that was given to me, a thousand-square-foot house at $300 a square foot. Is that affordable? It's not for me as a commissioner. So, you know, so I'm just saying, as we talk about, it's great to talk about it, make us all feel like we're doing something, but what are we really saying, what are we really doing? The cost is astronomical right now, and so until something changes, affordable is really not affordable. I just add that, I support it, but I just want to put that out there because you don't just flip a switch and voila, houses are built, people are moving in. It costs money.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter.
And I agree, Commissioner Williams-Cox. I think part of the point is that the cost of land is one of the largest costs driving up housing. So there's a million directions we could go in, which is part of, will be the discussion, but as far as what makes, I mean, it's true, there's nothing, there's no affordable housing without subsidies, whether it be donating land or other kinds of subsidies or tax incentives or write-offs. But the point here would be that the land, in theory, would be owned by the city or donated, and that is what would make it affordable without our giving additional financing. I just wanted to make that clear.
And thank you, Commissioner Porter. I led with, I will support this, but I'm just wondering, even if you got the land, building on it is still $300 a square foot after you have the land. It still is expensive, and that's all the point that I'm making. I don't disagree with what you're saying. I'm in support. I'm just saying, we need to be careful how we throw around affordable housing because it's not affordable in this market right now.
Motion on table to bring back the agenda item made by Commissioner Porter, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those pass, passes unanimously, 5-0. Commissioner Porter, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, would you be, are you prepared to give us a little bit of an update, a timeline for the John G. Riley Park? I was, I think, remotely at our meeting in March where we gave some direction to free up some money to get some projects going that are in the Neighborhood First Plan. So I know there's been a lot of discussion, and I just wanted an update on where we are with that.
Mr. Mayor, you okay?
Absolutely.
Happy to, Commissioner.
Absolutely.
Let me ask you, Ashley, this is very specifically a part of the Neighborhood First Plan in Griffin Heights, and we're in the, and we've sent some updates on this via email, but Ashley can give us the latest and greatest because we've promised a process related to that park in particular that'll culminate in October. And so, Ashley, if you'll tell us what the status is.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Manager. As was outlined in the Neighborhood First Plan that you all adopted for Griffin Heights, the impossible improvements to Riley Park was one of the items that was approved. It called for the formation of a working group that would be partnered with city staff to look at possible amenities, and then subsequent to that, the neighborhood approved funding that, well, they approved the request for funding that you all subsequently approved to go towards that park. We have $122,500, and we have convened the working group. We met in July for the very first meeting. We've got probably about 25 people that are committed to being involved in that process. It does include members of the Neighborhood Association that Mr. Glasper mentioned that have been previously established by their organization to look at the park. So we're all working together to come up with the ideas and explore the cost, look at the feasibility, and see what the community wants. We have another meeting scheduled next week. We anticipate probably needing another meeting in September. Our goal is to have this wrapped up with recommendations coming back to the community and be ready to go, boots on the ground, in October.
Excellent. Commissioner Porter.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Can I ask a question before?
On point, Commissioner Richardson.
Ashley?
Ashley.
There were three asks that were brought to me. One was for the amphitheater.
Yes, sir. Seating, there's a canopy of the amphitheater.
Canopy.
And a picnic pavilion over the picnic area.
Right. And the...
And so where are we with that? I think that's what is causing some, I guess, upset folk in the neighborhood because they've asked for those three things and they haven't seen progress towards getting those done. Ashley, towards Commissioner Richardson's question, because you've explained it well to me, we just need to be really clear on the distinction between the working group and the Neighborhood Association and how we're blending those together. Because the requests, Commissioner Richardson, that you've outlined are from the neighborhood group, that's not the same as the working group. And so we've promised and committed to this process with the working group. So those go into that kind of consideration. So, Ashley, help us reconcile those two things.
That's correct. One of the things that we've done, the Neighborhood Association obviously is a huge part of this process in the community. But we know that the larger community, they're not all members of the Neighborhood Association. And as we all know, there's a lot of people that feel very passionately about their parks. And so we've made a tremendous effort to get the word out to the entire community. We want to hear ideas from everyone. Certainly, the items that the Neighborhood Association has proposed are absolutely on the list. There's a laundry list of other suggestions and items that have come from others in the community. And what we're doing right now is we're vetting those, all of those ideas. They're going to have to prioritize, obviously, the 122,500. May not go as far as all the items on the list, but they're going to do some prioritization. But I think the key, and we see this in parks all over our community as we've done this process multiple times throughout the years, the key is that we need to have everybody, the neighbors that live near the park, the neighbors that use the park, you know, everyone needs to be involved and have an opportunity to share their ideas for the park, their concerns about the ideas for the park. And we've made a tremendous effort to include not just the Neighborhood Association, but all the neighbors in that area.
Yeah, it was my understanding in the meeting that I had, there was just those three asks.
From the Neighborhood Association group that they have, that they established, that's the only three items that, well, actually, they have, I think, presented several other items too, but those are the main three that they really would prefer to see happen sooner rather than later. The neighborhood as a whole, though, we've had some that have expressed concerns about some of those ideas. They have other ideas, you know, there's a laundry list of them, there's, you know, playground equipment, you know, lighting throughout the park, the canopies, the extra seating, there's, you know, requests for bathrooms. I mean, it kind of just runs the gamut, and we're trying to work through all of those. And again, building consensus in a neighborhood where you've got people that feel very strongly, the folks especially that live on the park, have a lot of interest and concerns. And so again, we're just trying to do our due diligence to make sure that we're listening to everyone
Right.
And try to develop consensus within that community.
Thank you, Ashley.
All right. Commissioner Matlow, on point, before I go back to Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you run that timeline? You said by October. Is that having what they want? Is that putting things out to bid? Is that being built? What's the full timeline?
So our goal is to have recommendations from the working group after their meeting in September, be ready to take that back to the community so that everyone stays informed and has opportunities for final feedback. And then October, we would be ready to start work on whatever comes from that process, and I say boots on the ground. There may be some things that are low-hanging fruit that we can go out and knock out immediately. We've, you know, there's conversations about some additional landscaping enhancements on the south end of the park. Those could happen very quickly. If the shelters are approved, we would be able to get those ordered and as soon as they come in, put them in. So it would be, that process to get to October is to get to a point where we hopefully have consensus and have a list of recommendations that everyone's comfortable with.
Okay. So we'd be doing that in-house, we wouldn't have to go to bid and drag it out, or?
Most of the items they're talking about now are things that we could either purchase off existing contracts. We have sources that we use. We use a lot of our in-house labor sometimes for some of these things. So I don't think there would be a long and drawn-out process. There might be things that have to be put out to bid because obviously we would follow the city's purchasing procedures. But I don't think this would be a huge, you know, putting something out to bid or an RFP for, you know, months on end. I don't see that.
Okay, thank you.
And before you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, before you said, is there, and I don't mean this in a, to condemn anyone, is there a reason, what was happening between the direction in March and July where we had the first working group meeting? It seems like a long time to wait.
So you all approved the funding
Right.
Being designated to Riley actually in June.
Okay.
The March meeting was where the overall funding for the Griffin Heights Second Year Funding Plan was approved.
Okay.
But there was a remaining $122,500 that the neighborhood needed to decide what they wanted to do with.
Okay.
That took a little time for them to get together and make their recommendation. We brought that back to you in June. You all approved it. And then we had our first meeting in July. And one of the reasons that it took several weeks from that time to have the meeting is we did a very robust public, you know, notice of the working group, of the working group meeting because, again, we really wanted to make sure everyone had an opportunity to participate. And so that took some time. We did, we actually walked the neighborhood, passed out flyers, we mailed flyers, we did tons of social media, working with our communications department. So we wanted to take the time to get it right.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And I was mistaken. I got those two confused, so thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Commissioner Porter, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I wanted to ask, I don't have a solution here or an answer for the, I have two more items based on the comments that we received. You know, I think we've all met with, with some of the folks at least who are on Pensacola Street and that west part of town. I'm wondering if we, you know, what is appropriate for a next step to kind of dig a little deeper into what's going on there and what we might be able to do. I know in our meeting, there were a couple of ideas, you know, and from what I heard, you know, there are some things that it seems like we might be able to do more quickly than others, you know, whether it's some placemaking things or whether it's infrastructure projects that we might already have planned. And then there's other issues that we've been dealing with across the city, you know, crime and the increase in unhoused population. You know, there's a lot going on there in that area. And I'm wondering, what do we think is the appropriate direction moving forward to address some of these issues? Because it seems like this area really is in need of some attention. And whether it's, you know, an item that comes to us, whether it's a workshop, I don't really have a specific ask here. I'm not sure if any of my colleagues have any ideas. It just does seem like we need more discussion about it, and I'd like to see more information from staff about what we've done, what we've tried, what's in the pipeline. I see, I don't know, Commissioner Richardson, it looks like, did you have a question or comment?
Sure. On point, Commissioner Richardson.
You know, I know that there have been discussions between, and Stephen, I hope you're okay mentioning your name, but I know that Stephen has had discussions with the city manager and staff about this issue. But guys, I'm going to tell you, this should have happened yesterday. That's the urgency of what's happening on West Pensacola Street. I'm out there very frequently. I was out there just yesterday donating clothes to the Hope Community. We've got to do something. I mean, we've heard these stories. I have experienced something similar. In my neighborhood, a homeless couple took up residence on the porch of a vacant house in our neighborhood, and it created havoc in our neighborhood. And I can't even imagine the extent of what they are, I mean, the trash, people sitting on the fences. I wouldn't live in, I personally would not live in that area. You know, I do, I do go to some of the businesses out there, but we've got to do something. And it has to happen immediately. We can't have more discussion, workshops, Commissioner.
Well, then what would you do?
This has been going on, and it's just terrible. I would invite any of you, just ride through, ride in front of the, there's a guy that's pitched a tent. There's a guy that's pitched a tent right there on the corner of Pensacola, and I think that, I forgot what the name of that street is that the Kearney Center is on, but I'm like, my God. But, I mean, just trash everywhere. I, something, and then, of course, they go, and as was said, it's not necessarily the homeless, because there are those homeless people who seek the services from the Kearney Center and legitimately use those services. But these other folk, I, yeah, I don't know how much more I can say, y'all. We've got to get something done in that corridor, and it needs to happen as soon as possible.
Commissioner Porter, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I lived there for four years, you know, not too long ago, and I witnessed it personally. And I also go there and, you know, when I say a workshop, an item, it is never to delay action. But if there is someone ready to make a motion today about, let's do this, let's do that, let's spend this, let's spend that, let's talk about it. I want to hear those ideas. I don't know what I would do that we would all agree on today, you know. So I hope you know, when I say that, it's not to delay action. It's that I want to make an informed decision because I agree, it's been a long time, and it's just gotten worse and worse and worse. It's not going to fix itself on its own. So, I mean, that's my comment on that. I don't have a specific motion to make.
Yeah, I don't, but I agree with you.
Okay, Mayor Protim.
I wanted to join in with Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Richardson, but it is not just the city. You know, it's easy to come to the city. The city, we're the only city in the county. So it's the county too. It's the Sheriff Department too. It's school board as well because they are out there. That's where the school board is, that's where the sheriff's office is. We need all hands on deck, not just the city. So I don't, like you, Commissioner Porter, I don't know specifically exactly what needs to be done, but something does need to be done, but it's not just incumbent upon the city of Tallahassee to do it. We've all got to figure this out. Now, as Commissioner Richardson said, and y'all know, I live on the south side of town. We've had our issues on the south side of town. And so, you know, people migrate. You do something here, folks begin to migrate and find another place to go. And then you do something here and they find another place to go. It's a people puzzle, is what it is. And a business puzzle, because we've got businesses who need to be preserved and protected, and we need to thrive, but we also got people who need to survive, and some of them are not well. Some of them have mental illness issues, and being able to determine who those folks are, the Kearney Center, we support the Kearney Center, and they're doing what they can, but they sleep them, but then they let them out during the daytime, which, you know, people are free to roam about the country, but they're not roaming. They're taking up spots and locations, doing what they think that they need to do. So I don't know the solution, but I know that it is not one that the city can do by itself. We've got to have the help of the Sheriff Department, and I know that they were doing some things out there with the tents by the ditch. Don't know how that's going or what's going on there, but I think that some folks need to, there does need to be a contention of people who can make something happen, make things happen, come together and try to sort out those who are ill, let's try to get them to where they can get some help, Appalachian Center or what have you, get them the help that they need to get them situated, get them to their families and loved ones if we can do that. I know some of that is going on. But then trying to find services and programs to get these people into, in a humane way, get these people to where they can sustain themselves and not become a menace, continue to be a menace. But I agree, I met with the Leonis as well, and I absolutely feel you. I know what you're trying to do on the west end, and we need that to happen. But it's not the homeless people necessarily that's causing the crime. And you've said that, I know you've said that. That criminal element is just exasperating the opportunity to help those who need help. So we've got to, that's where we need law enforcement to help us with that criminal element, but not, again, not just TPD. We need the collectives to help us on that west end to help resolve that cameras, you know, and other things to make sure that we're doing what we can to try to clean it up over there, to keep those businesses thriving and keep the economic development going and make parents feel secure when they send their children here and folks who are attending events and what have you on that west end. So I absolutely feel you, but it can't just be us. It's got to be others helping us.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Matlow, we are all still on Commissioner Porter's time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Commissioner Cox in the aspect that there's a lot of things we could maybe do to displace the problem and send it to different areas of the city, but the overall issue, and I recognize West Pensacola Street probably bears a larger brunt of some of these issues in other areas, but at the same time, these issues are our community-wide. I work on Gain Street every day. You know, I can tell you, several of the people are out there that I know. I can tell you the people who were out there that have been murdered. I can tell you the people who were out there that have since died. And I can tell you when there are people experiencing a mental health crisis or committing real criminal activity, TPD has always responded, and they've always responded appropriately. I don't think, if there's criminal activity happening, I don't think our hands are tied to address that. So the question then becomes, are we going to criminalize other behavior to attempt to displace people? And if it's low-level crime, they're going to go to the jail, which is 100 feet away, and they're probably going to be released the next day. So it's not, that's not a solution to the overall crime, I think. Commissioner Cox mentioned all that, mental health services that need to be expanded that people are in need. We talk about housing, rapid rehousing, low-income housing all the time, and as wages continue to not keep up, people will continue to not be able to afford a place to live. A lot of people do turn to drugs in the streets because that's where they can afford to be. So I mean, there's a society, a societal issue at large that really would need to be addressed. So can we take baby steps to see what we can do to lower the impact on West Pensacola Street? Yes, but I don't think we can just go in there with a hammer and displace people and not expect somebody else to show up from another neighborhood with the same concerns. But I appreciate the conversation. I understand where everybody's coming from, and I'm open to the discussion. If there's something we can do that's appropriate. And if there are crimes being committed that aren't being responded to, we would like to hear, but that hasn't been the feedback I've received along the way.
On point. Commissioner Richardson, on point.
Well, I mean, you know, there is lots that can be done and should be done. The two things that I'm hearing that I think need to be done most immediately, and you all let me know if I'm wrong, but cleaning up the trash along that corridor, that in and of itself would make it look better and more appealing. Secondly, if we could begin to patrol that area more, that, I think, would help. Because what we're hearing is the abundance or overabundance almost of criminal activity, whether it's low-level or, I mean, if somebody steals the rake out of your yard, that's yours rake stolen. I'm just using that as an example. It may be a petty crime, but that's still your rake, and you know, you've got to go buy another one, just as an example. And so those two things, I think if we could begin to address those immediately, then we could begin to, again, take the baby steps that somebody mentioned to start to address some of the other issues in partnership with the businesses and residents in that area and others who might want to be involved in that.
Good point. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So then am I hearing, I mean, is there someone who wants to make a motion on their time? Or, okay.
I mean, I would do it, yeah.
Okay, then I'll wait.
Like me too.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
And then another issue we heard about is the Giles House. Now, I know that the city has worked with the family and some of the local people involved. They mentioned growth management, they have property, and there seems to be this issue of funding. Are we aware of any, I know that it's not designated as a historic property. Do we have loan programs? Is there any? Is there anything we have that is an option to, to support preserving these homes?
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Ashley Mike could help me, too. And Commissioner, you indicated, we've, we've talked to Ms. Dupont, and in fact, done a lot of good work in terms of clearing some hurdles with the ability to get the houses moved. They've identified two lots they control and bond. There's a, there's a structure on one of those lots. Our growth management director, John Reddick, has done some work on that. And so I think we've cleared a lot of hurdles. We've made that where we think that's entirely possible within this timeframe. The, the homes themselves are not, they have not been deemed historically significant. The developer that owns the homes today received a demolition permit now, maybe a month ago. It's been some time. In that process, there's a review to determine the historical significance of the structures. And in fact, an architect was hired by the city to, to evaluate that. And so it didn't rise to that level. Ashley talked to Ms. Dupont as well, because we, you know, in Ashley's group, we've got our neighborhood services, and we're not aware of any funding that, that's available. And Ashley, you'll correct me if I'm wrong in terms of funding options you discussed with Ms. Dupont, but that's kind of the process we've been through. Ashley, can you add anything to what I summarized?
No, Mr. Manager, you're right on point. The, there does seem to be an effort underway, you know, by the group that she referenced to try to identify funds and raise funds. They've certainly, I know, are looking at, you know, grant funding opportunities, but we're not aware of a funding source at this moment that would be able to assist in the short term.
Thank you. And the barber shop, that was blueprint, correct? That, that, that was a blueprint project to, you know what I'm talking about in Cascades Park, the Smoky Hollow Barber Shop?
Although, I'm sorry, I was not understanding. Yeah, that was a blueprint project, yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay. I know that I really want to see them be able to preserve that, that home. Are you aware, Mr. City Manager, of any funding that, in the category that blueprint used? I know we're not speaking as blueprint here, but that blueprint used or has available for something like that?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not, and I think, you know, I, I, I shared, I think the historical designation of the homes matters.
Correct.
And, you know, that's why I shared that, because it would rise to that level, there could be access to other funding means, even the blueprint may be a consideration for that body, but, but they don't rise to that level a lot. So I'm not aware of whether it would be within blueprint, how to make that nexus, or any kind of access to grants or other, other funds.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for me.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I've recently learned about that, that property as well, and I think the deadline is, is, is very tight. And, you know, I was asking funding sources that could be possible. City of Tallahassee, I think the relocation is also in a CRA district. That may be a possibility to, to, to seek funding, but we're not going to meet again before CRA meets again. Is, is there anything that would prohibit the city of Tallahassee from stepping in to fund the relocation?
Mr. Mayor, would the question be, is there anything that would prohibit you as the commission from appropriating dollars for that? I, I don't believe so. I mean, the city attorney can, can correct me if she knows of some restriction. I think that's the question, is there a budgetary restriction? I'm not sure you have any budget money, but I, I'm not sure of a regulatory or a budgetary restriction.
Yeah, so, I mean, my position would be, if we could, as this board, if we want to make it happen, I guess it's up to you, the discussion, to give that direction today, follow up at, at the CRA level to see if these houses could be relocated. Madam Attorney?
The only question I would have is the public purpose. I mean, the property, as I understand it, is not historic.
Right.
So I, I'm trying to discern the public purpose for actually relocating.
Yeah, and, and I agree. So I, I've asked, you know, several people in the community, and I know it's not designated on the historic registry, but a lot of people do feel it holds significant value as, as in, in black history. And if it's not the will to move forward with it, you know, I, I won't push it, but if we can save these historic structures, knowing that the developer is willing to let them move it, and a location has been identified, and we're just looking for, for the moving cost. I do think, on that point, I think it's most appropriate for the CRA to take it up if it will be located in the CRA district, because that can add value to the CRA, and it's probably the most appropriate place to search it. I was just asking city-wise, considering the time constraints and, and not meetings, if there was anything we could do to move that along. Maybe that's asking the city manager to discuss it with the CRA director in advance to see if that's a possibility.
On point. Mayor Protim.
Commissioner Matlow, I, I can appreciate your, your willingness to want to do, do this. I, I too want to do it. We have no idea what that cost is, do we? Do we have a cost?
Not verified, so.
What, what ballpark?
$100,000 is what was relayed.
$60,000, yeah, to move both.
$60,000 to 100. But my, my concern is that we have the, I, I, being a mother, I, I think about this with my children. I do this for this child, and then the next child will say, well, you did it for them. Now you need to do it for me. So we, if, you know, here we are at the end of our budget year, we're asking citizens to, you know, to pay a little extra for law enforcement, but then we're going to go and find money to do something that we just learned about. It just came to us, we've been getting emails about it, but we just learned about tonight. But that property was sold to some, was sold, I don't know how long ago that property was sold with those houses on it. So it wasn't that, it was just, just determined that this, that this, this might need to happen, you know? I, I can appreciate the effort, but where would the money come from? And then the next ask, how would we then find the money for the next ask if we do, do this? I too love to preserve as much as we can, you know, but other than making a contribution to a fundraising effort in the community to, to try to raise the money to do that, $100,000, you know, is, is a lot of money to, to, for taxpayers, but for those who are willing to, to give, you know, Commissioner Ziffer would probably just write a check, and we can get that thing moved tomorrow, you know? You know what I'm saying?
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion? No, so I'm saying, I think that, like, the community has come together many other times to help save and do things. We need to do that, because I don't want to go back to other, other historically designated projects that shall remain nameless, that we now would, would come and do this, and then they would say, well, you know, we wanted to do this, and y'all didn't allow us to do that. And so I, we just got to be real careful that we are, dare I say, fair and balanced.
Mr. Mayor, no, I, I, I understand. I, I do think, and I will bring it to the CRA for, for discussion, particularly for the budget comments. I know with the proposed tax increase, that increases the budget that we previously discussed about, discussed in, in, in the district, but I would say, a lot of things will come, but once things are torn down, they're, they're never coming back. That opportunity is, is gone forever. So this particular project is driven by the imminent need that the demolition is, is impending. And I think that's a decision we can make. I understand if you do want for others, but, you know, that's what we do every day in, in the decisions we take and what we decide to fund in CRA projects and developments. We can't fund every project that, that comes forward, but we can, we can look at which ones have merit. And I understand the time constraints and all the things that you're saying that make this a, a, a large hurdle, and I respect that, and if it's not possible, we won't do it.
Is September 6th is around the corner.
Yeah.
Now, that may be, you know, time enough for, you know, if, if the Gates Foundation or somebody else wants to come in, somebody with, with a lot of money that can miss $100,000. But I just, I want to do it. I do. And if I could afford to do it, I would just do it. But we, I can't, and I got to be, you know, we've been accused of a lot of things, but I do take seriously being a good steward of the money that, that we, we've, we're, we're operating with.
On point.
On point. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. I did just want to add to the conversation that they, they have said that they would, a loan would work just as, I mean, obviously, a loan is not as, you know, as good as free money, but they did express that as well. I just wanted to add that.
Commissioner Matlow, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think Commissioner Porter hit, hit most of the points. The only, the only question I had, Mr. City Manager, when will we have an executive session on the, the fire union negotiations? We heard there were five proposals. I don't think we've had one to date to just know where we're at, where they're at.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Commissioner, we're not there yet. I don't know what the answer is. It'll be, as we come closer to some kind of position in negotiation. So as was indicated earlier in the comments, there's been 10 negotiating sessions. Wasn't a lot of movement towards some agreement. That's normally what triggers an executive session as we bring, you guys will remember, as we bring something and say, kind of hears where everything is, what direction do you have for us? We're not that close. And now what I would suspect is, as time marches on, we'll have to get closer, but I don't, I don't really have a date for it.
I, I, I think it would be beneficial if, if we knew how far apart we were, not having that conversation. You know, traditionally, we, we've not been close in the past, but we know how far we are apart. I, I haven't heard any of their proposals. I haven't met with them, and obviously, we won't discuss that in this meeting, but I think it would be beneficial for all of us to know where they are and where we are. So when they do come and there's public testimony, we have any clue what's going on.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I, I think, Commissioner, I appreciate the words. I think that's the nature of the negotiation. We have negotiating sessions. They're not negotiated in the public, as, as you indicated. I think the comments that we heard tonight are probably an attempt to move the negotiations.
Sure.
I'm optimistic that they'll, they'll move. This is a one-year agreement that we're negotiating. I don't think that's a secret. I think that's been shared with you guys. And I think, I think it's pretty, pretty needed to, to move the negotiation forward, but we're not that, we're, we're not very close.
Okay. I, so just for the public, elected officials are completely in the dark of, of how this negotiation is going and, and where anybody is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's the process. That's the process, and I have full faith and confidence in the city manager to represent our interests in these negotiations, and I understand the frustration on behalf of the union, but we're going to do it the right way, no matter how long it takes, and I too think that we'll get to an agreement at some point. But political tactics of coming to testify to try to move things along does not move me one bit at all. You start the floor. Mr. Matlow.
We covered it all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a follow-up to that conversation, what I would, what I would ask, because we know, just like with our police officers, if the salaries aren't competitive, then we're going to lose our quality employees. So I would just say that as the negotiations move forward, and I'm sure you all are aware of that, but I just wanted to reinforce that, that our salaries are competitive in that regard. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring to you all's attention. Tomorrow evening, the Urban League is having a crime prevention forum at the Walker Ford Community Center. You can either attend in person or by Zoom. If you want to attend by Zoom, call Curtis Taylor at the Urban League, and I'm sure he can give you, or will give you that link. Saturday morning, the FAMU Grape Harvest at their Ag Center on Mayan Drive out near the new Amazon Fulfillment Center, if you want to take advantage of that, maybe get some free grape wine, grapes and grape wine. And then lastly, want to announce that on Sunday, our former congressman, Al Lawson, and his beautiful bride, Dolores, will be celebrating their 53rd wedding anniversary. And they've invited my wife and I to be a part of that, and we certainly are looking forward to that. And later that day, on Sunday, is the, at 2:00 PM, is the FAMU Booster Kickoff at the Lawson Center. So just wanted to announce those things going on in our, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm going to have to take issue with Congressman Lawson, because I was with him today at the 220 football meeting that they do on Wednesdays, and he used me to ask the coach questions, but he didn't bother to invite me to his little shindig, so I'm going to have to.
Service at their church.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to have to take, take issue with that. I, I want to revisit the west end district, because I know that, living on the south side of town, we've had to address issues there. We still need to deal with issues on the, on the west end, just like we have to deal with issues on the north end, we have to deal with issues on the east end. So on the west end, I would like to work with someone that, with, with, someone from, from our, our staff, county sheriff, and to go out and just have some, wrap our arms around what is really going on, on the, on the west end, including people from the Kearney Center, if that, if we think that that's appropriate. We've got to do something. No one has a silver bullet, but we've got to try to put forth some additional effort. I know that, Mr. Leone, I met with you and your, and your son-in-law, and I know that you all met with the city manager, and you met with the police chief. So I know that you've communicated what the, what the issues are, and you brought some other businesses with you tonight. You, you've communicated what, what your, what the problem is. We don't have a solution, but the only way, the only way I believe we're going to get to a solution is to look at what kind of concessions we can make to try to make that happen. I know you've sent me pictures of the trash, and I've sent the pictures to city manager, and he's had staff come over with the beautification and, and clear it up, but I'm sure it, it comes back. But we've got to deal with it. Tallahassee is a beautiful city. I talked earlier about how other cities think what we're doing here is, is great. If we can take a centennial field and a stormwater solution and turn it into a beautiful cascade park, surely we can put our heads together and figure out how to make the west end of town a pretty place to, to visit as a destination as well. So I would like to ask, Mr. City Manager, if you would identify someone who I can work with from your staff, because I'm not going to ask anybody to do anything that I'm not willing to do, that I can work with, with your, with your staff and your, and I'll reach across the street and get with some folks over at the county. I'll reach, reach, I'm willing to reach out to the Sheriff Department, and let's do what we need to do to get down there, and let's get the west side of town cleaned up, because the Leone's are trying to do something that I want done. I'm, I'm motivated by that. And that hotel on the west end of town, I'm motivated by that, that vision. As our airport continues to grow and, and expand, I, I, I want to be able to make sure that we're, we can, we're comfortable with people being, being over there that may be visiting us in our town. So, Mr. City Manager, I'm, I'm asking you to identify, because, you know, I, I can't reach around you and go to your staff.
Absolutely.
I want to go through you. Give me your, your best. You've got plenty to choose from, because they're all experts in all subject matters. Give me your best, and let us go over to West Tennessee, West Pensacola Street, and let's make magic happen.
Will do.
Thank you.
And I certainly don't want to preempt the mayor pro tem, but I had mentioned earlier that I was going to make a motion on those two items that I talked about. Do you want to hold off on that until you have your meeting with Mayor Protim with the representatives from the west, that west side corridor? the representatives from the west, that west side corridor?
I must confess, I don't remember the two items.
It was the trash cleanup and increased police patrol.
Now, I, I'm pretty sure that the trash, all the city manager has to do is say, go do it. And, and he had staff that will, will get it done. But now the, the police patrol, I, I, I can't touch that. I don't know, know what, you know, because we know what our numbers are, we know what we're trying to do, we're trying to get additional officers. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it's management.
Right.
Manager.
Yeah, the trash isn't as easy as me just telling somebody, but, but.
But you're making it seem so easy.
We'll figure some, some way around that.
Where's Reggie? Is Reggie in the room?
But, but let, let me, he's here, and he does a great job. They do a great job. And some of it's college influence, and then there's a lot of influences in that area. And Commissioner Richardson, and if necessary, I can ask somebody from the chief's staff to come forward. The patrol's more difficult, simply to make a motion. I don't want to mislead that we could increase patrol. They're organized in a very specific way, in the north and the south. There's so many people on patrol. The reality of it is, and, and I know we talked to Mr. Leone, come, come on up, Chief. We're more than happy to have this conversation, and we've shared it. We, we don't want to say something that we can't do. I don't think that would be fair to anybody. And what we know is that TPD responds to 85% of the calls in our county, and they stay extremely busy. And the reality of it is, they're all on patrol. So the chief has even reorganized, put more members on patrol, but they stay engaged in calls. And so when they're on patrol, they're not driving, they're literally working calls. And so there's, there's this crunch of availability, and that's part of the request for more officers. And, you know, we're doing everything we can. Chief, I'm, so I know I'm saying what you're going to say.
You're saying everything.
I've heard it too many times. And, and so, so I want to be sensitive to that. If we said, hey, we're going to put more people on patrol.
Yeah.
You wouldn't necessarily see them, because they're going to go, as soon as there's a crime, they're going to that call.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you're not going to see them moving up and down the corridor. And so we've even talked to Mr. Leone. I think part of our strategy in the budget is not just, we realize that we can only hire so many people. I mean, there's a practical limit of how many you can hire, how fast you can hire, size of agency, all these things. I've shared, you know, I just shared last week, we, we had a conversation at NEVA, and we are now at a point where we have 50% of the officers per capita as compared to the national average. So how, the number of police officers in Tallahassee relative to population, that was 80% in the, in the early 90s. And so, you know, we've stretched and done more with less. And so we know we're at a point where we see a rise in violent crime, it's going the wrong direction. We know we're at a point where we need more resources, but there's a practical limit as well. You know, good news is, this year, we stood up our real-time crime center. That's maybe six months old. Chief, correct me if I say that wrong. It's not that old. It has been unbelievably helpful. It's staffed by the Sheriff's Department, TPD, as well as FSU and the Florida Department of Law Enforcement as a participant. And so we've seen great benefit there. And, and as we've done that, we now have the ability to add cameras that are in real-time, not just simply passive cameras that are recording, but that integrate into the real-time crime center and become a force multiplier. Just last week, we added a camera, might have been two downtown, to, to increase our, our hours of eyes, if you will, because we have downtown officer, downtown officer that's assigned, but he can, he can't work 24 hours a day. But we can put cameras up that can be directly fed into certain officers' cars. And so we have the ability to kind of create even more efficiency. So I know, Commissioner Richardson, you didn't ask for this answer, but, but, and I know you've heard some of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to be, I want to be clear. I don't want to make promises we can't.
Sure.
Honor, but, but we, we prioritize this. Chief of Staff, by the way, Commissioner Williams Cox, your, your point of contact would be Chief of Staff Seleski.
Correct.
Because he's already been assigned to this area, and I know Jennifer has.
Crazy, I thought I saw him.
He's here. She has his phone number. So we, we want to make sure we prioritize this. When we have issues, is, is small as trespassing, and that could sound small, but it could escalate very quickly. We want to make sure we're doing the very, very best we can. We know we need more resources. We know we're stretched. The data tells us that. And so that's, so, so I want to be, I want to be sensitive not to have the chief try to redirect patrols and him tell us, that's really just, it's, you're not going to see it, because, because there's a certain dynamic to it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to share that. Chief, do I have, did I miss anything?
Other than the, the conversations we're having with FSU Police Department.
Yeah, good.
And, you know, one of the things we're doing is looking at, they are willing to have the conversation to expand beyond their, you know, footprint of just the university. So we're having those conversations with them. That would be a force multiplier for us, you know, to get more officers into those areas beyond what they would traditionally do. So we're having those conversations as well, and they're going very, in a very positive direction.
Chief, if I, if I may ask a question.
On point.
Who handles security for, I mean, law enforcement for TCC?
They have their own police.
They have a sworn force.
So we need to bring them on board, too?
Right, Chief Harden, and we work very well with him as well.
Okay, we need to bring him on board.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mattlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Chief, when, when people say hands are tied, is it, are we not responding and able to address criminal activity, or we're not able to change the dynamic down there? Or what are we hearing?
Yeah, thank you for that. Let me be very clear. My hands have never been tied. My hands are not tied. For us, it's, it's simply staffing. I mean, it's really what it comes down to, but our officers respond to every single thing that they can and every thing that, every, every single thing that they're called to as quickly as they can. But I have never been once to told, don't do this or, you know, do that. We, we certainly look at areas and certainly where there's emphasis, whether it's Pensacola Street or others, we, we have what's called extra protections, and we encourage our officers when they, if they have any downtime, to do those extra protections. And you can look on our CAD system and see the number of times where they actually do that in any area of town. But let me be very clear, my hands have never been tied.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And I do hear from frustration from people if a crime doesn't get solved, but I think that's different than responding to an incident, and if there's ongoing criminal activity and you can make an arrest, you do, you're not limited. No one's directing you to, hey, don't, don't go arrest people who are committing crimes.
That's correct, yeah. We enforce all laws.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the chief? Chief, are you receiving any advisement whatsoever from the city manager or the city attorney to pump the brakes, not arrest, not enforce?
Never, sir. I've never gotten those.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You still have the floor.
I think I've said enough tonight.
All right. Sounds great. Chief Sanders.
Our new fire chief.
Talk to me about what's going on in the department. The union testified earlier tonight, made it sound like it's mass exit going on over there. How are the hiring and firing practices of the fire department going right now? Do we have a full force? Have we lost a significant amount of men and women from the fire department in the past couple of months? The paint, the picture that was painted by the union was pretty dire.
So currently, I have two vacancies.
Okay, so it's not nearly as dire as we seem to think it is. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, let me add to that, because I, and I know he knows it, but it was said that we hired 21 or two new.
We hired 22 in 2022.
2022, and it was said that we lost 20% of them. We actually lost four of those of the class, that 22-member class, and, and as we inspect that, Chief knows the reasons. They were very logical reasons, health reasons, you know, change of mind, because we want to inspect that very closely. It's not as if somebody came and, you know, took them from us, because they've become pretty vested. We're very, very mindful that, that, Chief, add anything you wish on that.
Right. They, they all had different reasons. Some left because of family, family, they wanted to be close to the family. Some left because of, they wanted to get out of the fire profession. They moved into something different.
Yeah. Well, that's all I have. I want you to know, I think you're doing a great job as chief, and I really do appreciate everything that you're doing. Unfortunately, I feel the need to double-check facts that are coming out when the union testifies, because we run into these situations quite a bit.
Right.
Where the situation's made to be a lot more dire. You know you have an open line of communication with me and the city manager. If there's anything that we ever need to discuss, my door is always open, but I'm always coming to you, not the union, on our personnel issues when it comes to hiring and firing, okay?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you. When it comes to the Kearney Center, I would like to ask the city manager to do a full analysis and review of the original document that was negotiated between the city of the county and the Kearney Center upon the opening of the Kearney Center. I'm looking at my good friend Gil Ziffer in the room. We were the only two that were serving at the time that's, that's still up here when we went into this agreement, and there were certain responsibilities that the Kearney Center committed to. And I believe one of them was to make sure they were open during the day, and they need to have their doors open. And if they are not meeting the requirements of that original agreement, that needs to be addressed immediately. I think that is what's causing a lot of the spillover, if you will, during the day. And we have a lot of people that are hanging out on the sidewalk in the streets, because they don't necessarily have a place to go during the day. And it is my understanding that that was part of the original agreement, and there's probably other aspects of the original agreement that need to be addressed. And so I would like, you don't have to even wait to bring it back as an agenda item. Just send it over when you have the analysis of, what was the original agreement and how's it going right now? Any questions on that, Mr. Manager?
No, sir.
When it comes to the solid waste pickup on Pensacola Street, let me, let me first and foremost acknowledge our solid waste department and the fine job that they do. I know you're frustrated. I know you're very frustrated. We're all very frustrated, but I don't want you to put the blame on the solid waste department because they're doing a great job. What happened was COVID. We used to have nonviolent criminals that were being incarcerated at Leon County Jail would go out and work on a work detail. And when COVID hit, the sheriff shut down that program. We don't have the work details like we used to. As a result, normal operations of how we used to clean up our streets in Tallahassee, both state, county, and local, we've been going through these growing pains of trying to figure out. Instead of having the work cleanup crews that would come and constantly clean up all the litter and the trash, now it's just sitting there. And we are struggling. We're trying our best that we can. But what we need to do, it is time to reach back out to the sheriff formally on behalf of the city of Tallahassee and ask if the time is right to bring back the sheriff work crews, okay? We need the litter assistance on the road, just like we had pre-COVID. Remember, the reason why they shut it down was because when COVID hit, they released a lot of the nonviolent inmates due to COVID and health reasons, and so they did not have the work crew to actually be able to do so. The question is, is that crew available now? Okay?
Yes, sir, definitely. That's a great point. The solid waste folks we have, they pick up containerized.
Correct.
And so, so it's, it's the distinction. I appreciate you making that.
Yeah, but what's happening is the containers are overflowing. We've all seen it. I mean, the trash is just billowing out, because whoever is going out to pick up is trying to put it into the container. It, it, it's a mess.
And in, in the follow-up I'll give you on the Kearney Center, and I don't know what the status is, we added a number of garbage cans, and we had an agreement with the Kearney Center to pick those up. I'm going to check on that as well. They were, they were picking them up for us.
They're not doing it.
We'll inspect all of that. I think that's a good, a good point, sir.
Yeah, they're not doing it, Mr. Manager. I can tell you that.
Yeah, and it needs to be dealt with.
Yeah.
Who was supposed to pick it up?
Kearney. The Kearney Center, so we provided the containers, and we had an agreement that they would pick it up. I'll, I'll, I'll look at that as well.
So in light of the sheriff work crews, let's assume that that also is not available. I do think also we should get creative with, with some trash pickup. And I would like for you also to, or Madam Attorney, you, to reach out collectively to the state attorney, Jack Campbell, and see when appropriate if there are deferment options for us to have individuals help pick up some trash. I remember growing up, not that it ever happened to me personally, but once in a blue moon, if you were in high school and got in a little bit of trouble, you would have to go pick up some trash on the side of the road.
On Saturdays.
Or if you were in college, you had to go pick up some trash on the side of the roads. I'm interested in talking to the state attorney to see if that is a deferment option that could be placed on the table for, we, 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 we need all the assistance that we can and some of the traditional methods that we've had in the past. Let's see if we can bring them back as well.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I never had to do that myself, but I heard about it.
I like that. Chief, I am glad that we are in negotiations. Where's Chief?
There he is.
Where's Chief?
Which one?
Travel. I'm glad we are in negotiations with FSU PD, and I think that it's going to be a tremendous help, as you said, as a multiplier effect, with the officers in the area. I am also interested in seeing us get a little bit more creative with the police presence, even if it is a faux police presence.